Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the February 12th Planning Meeting. Jackie, can you please do the roll call?
Yes. Commissioner Shearer.
Here.
Commissioner Carr.
Here.
Commissioner Schatz.
Here.
Commissioner Fisher.
Here.
Commissioner Gilbert.
Here.
Commissioner Hallbach.
Yes.
Commissioner Carr.
Here.
Commissioner Boyce.
Here.
Commissioner Dinkelman.
Here.
So, the first item on the agenda is approval of the meeting agenda. Are there any changes or updates to that? Nothing? Can I get a motion and a second for approval?
Second.
Thank you. Next up is the approval of the consent agenda. The only item on the consent agenda is the minutes of the last Planning Commission meeting on January 22nd. Are there any items that need to be updated or changed within that? Hearing done, I would take a motion to approve. Up next is community comment. During this period, anyone that wants to come forth and give us information will be considered. I would say that anything that's later in the agenda would not be considered for this. So if there's something not on the agenda tonight you wish to speak about, please come forth at this time. Hearing done, I would take a motion to close that. Thank you. On the agenda next are three public hearings tonight. As we go through those, for each one of them, the city staff will introduce the subject. We'll ask the applicant to come forward, as well as any members of the public who want to speak to that particular item. First up is variance at 4015 Wood End Drive.
Mr. Chair, members of the Planning Commission, the property is located at 4015 Wood End Drive. The request is for a front yard setback variance. They're requesting a 6.7-foot front yard setback variance for the property that's highlighted. It's on the east side of Wood End Drive. You'll notice that the property to the south is a neck lot, and then property to the north along the east side. Here's an aerial photograph and a more detailed view. What you'll notice is that the subject property, which is highlighted in blue, shares a driveway with the property that's directly to the south. That's the neck lot. The house actually faces north. This is to the south, so it's a little bit different arrangement at the end of the cul-de-sac. Here is a photograph of the existing home as it exists today. What you'll see behind it to the south is that property to the south with the garage and the shared driveway. A view from the street from the back. This would be the back southeast corner of the property, and then a view of the rear yard towards the east. This is the property that's directly to the north. It's at a slightly lower elevation than the subject property. And then, again, the house that's directly to the north with that shared driveway off of the cul-de-sac. This is a survey that was recently done of the property showing the location of the existing home. The front corner of the garage is a little over 16 feet away from the front lot line. The remainder of the house varies between 29 and 1/2 feet and about 34 feet from the front lot line. The request is to tear down the home and the breezeway, leave the existing garage, and then rebuild on the site with the new home and a new connection, new breezeway, to the new home. This is a little bit busy for a diagram. What it's showing is the existing garage location in green, and then the green outline is the existing outline or footprint of the home. The area in orange is the new home, new breezeway. The darker line indicates the required front yard setback, which is the average front yard setback of the homes on either side, which was the home to the north, which is a little over 18 feet away, and the home to the south, which is much further back at 50, a little over 59 feet away. So the average, then, actually is further back, much further back than the existing garage, and also bisects the existing home. The new home will actually be further back, pulled away from where the existing front face of the home is. It will provide deeper setbacks from the north property boundary. You can see that the existing home is a little over 6 feet away. They will be providing 19-foot setbacks on either side of the home. The home to the south was built in 1955, so it was built after the placement of the existing home. However, that does affect the required front yard setback. This is a similar graphic. What it's showing in the pink triangle area is the area that's overlapping that required setback for the new home. The area here is actually part of the porch, and that is allowed to overlap the front yard setback. You're allowed 80 square feet to overlap that setback area. This, then, is the elevation of the new home, front elevation. This is the existing garage. It'll be refaced, redone on the outside to match the new home. This is the north elevation of the home. You can see that the existing garage is much further forward than the remainder of the home. And this, then, is the south elevation of the new home. All of the homeowners that surround along the cul-de-sac have signed variance approval. We did receive a letter from the neighbor to the north that was not included in this, and that's been set out in front of you. So the primary issue is the proposed development reasonable for the site. Staff does believe the proposal is reasonable for four reasons. The proposed use is permitted use in the single dwelling unit district. The new home will improve upon an existing non-conforming front yard setback of the current home. The home is appropriate in size and scale for the lot. It does meet all of the other requirements, with the exception of the front yard setback. The improvements will provide a reasonable use of the lot, given the current front yard setback requirement. The variance will allow for a new home to be built at nearly the same distance from Wood End as the existing home. The front yard setback of the new home will actually increase the front yard setback to some degree. The new home nearly matches that existing non-conforming setback that has been in place since 1951. The home that's affecting the setback to the south, that's much deeper, that's sort of on the neck lot portion, was built in 1955, so that was built after the subject home, and does affect their setback. Staff does support the request and does recommend approval based on meeting the standards for variance. Approval should be based on the following conditions: that the home must be constructed per the proposed plans, date stamped January 28, 2014. And with that, I will stop and answer any questions you may have.
Chris, just a quick question on the, if you can go back to the new site plan for a second.
This one?
Yeah. Can you just mention what is needing a variance again? Is a garage already allowed?
The garage is existing non-conforming, and they're leaving it. So, yeah, if they tore it down and they were to rebuild, it would definitely need a variance, but they're not doing, they're just refacing the garage. The new construction is actually, this corner and this corner are overlapping the required front yard setback.
So are essentially approving or disproving those two corners, then?
Yes.
Okay.
And there is a porch that does go beyond that. You can see that right here. You can have 80 square feet overlap into the front yard setback area, so that actually is.
That actually is covered?
Yes.
Gotcha. Any other questions for Chris?
Chris, are flag lots or neck lots allowed under our current ordinance?
It'd be really difficult to try to achieve that, so.
So it's not just the location of the home on that property to the south, it's also the fact that it's a lot that almost doesn't exist in, wouldn't probably exist in Edina today if we were doing a subdivision?
Not without benefit of variances.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? Would the applicant like to add anything?
Does this work? So, yeah, I'm Eric. My wife Stacy and architect Jeff. If you have any architectural questions, he can answer them, but I think the one item of clarification that I would like from the staff report is with respect to no changes to the current plan. I mean, we're happy with the variance that has been requested, but things like, we are considering adding a rear door to the breezeway area, which is for the new breezeway, and like siding might change and things like that. I was, just wanted to clarify that those types of cosmetic changes wouldn't be applicable to that restriction, and that's really the only question I have, so.
Okay. Thank you. So as this is a public hearing, if there's anyone who wants to address this issue, please step to the microphone. You'll have approximately three minutes to speak. There's buttons on there that will show green and go to yellow at about a minute left, and then finally to red. Anyone that wishes to speak on this? Don't see anyone running forth here. Take a motion to close the public hearing.
I move we close the public hearing.
All that agree, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Public hearing is closed. Take it back up to the commission for any comments. Commissioner Grable.
Carrie, one question on what the applicant mentioned, cosmetic changes to the plan, and how would that affect the variance? I think it's a topic, you know, it's good information to have for everybody. Does it make a difference if he puts a window or a door in the back of the house?
No, it should not. I mean, that doesn't materially change the variance request.
Okay, thank you. None of that area would go into the piece that is part of the variance, right? Any other? Commissioner Fisher?
Well, just to be clear, I think the issue is, when we make a statement like that, is that the proponent wouldn't then push the house out and have more area in the, you know, the variance area and all that. It's not the cosmetics necessarily.
Yes, Commissioner.
I move approval of the variance subject to the staff conditions.
Is there a second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Go forth and build. All right, next up is a variance at 5212 Dunkridge Road, Edina, and Chris will introduce this one as well.
Mr. Chair, members of the Planning Commission, this is a property located at 5212 Dunkridge Road. As highlighted, it is on the west side of Dunkridge Road. What you'll notice, just looking at the site location map, is that the property to the north is a through lot. It actually has a home that fronts Locklough Drive, and their rear yard goes all the way through to Dunkridge Road. And I mention that because the variance is for a north side yard setback, so it is up against the neighbor's backyard. Here is an aerial photograph of the subject site. Currently, it's a Rambler with an attached two-car garage. The home was built very close to the north side of the property. Here is a front elevation of the home. There have been a number of projects relating to the property. It's been indicated in the application that they have a three-phase program for their home. They're now on the third phase, which they have done some interior remodeling, they've redone exterior, put in new windows. Now they are hoping to put a second floor onto the home, and then also add to the width and to the front of the garage. This is the home that's directly to the north, and again, it fronts Locklough, so it's up against Locklough, not against Dunkridge. This is the property that's directly to the south. It does front Dunkridge. Here is a current survey of the property, and highlighted in pink is the addition that they're proposing to the footprint of the building. The rest of it, they'll be adding a second floor onto the home. They want to add approximately four feet to the width of the garage. Right now, it's a little bit over 19 feet in width for the exterior measurement, which is a pretty narrow two-car garage inside. They'd like to add four feet to the width of their garage, and then also about a foot and a half to the front for a little more depth to it. This just shows that addition, again, the four-foot extension of the garage and the one-and-a-half-foot extension of the front. So those are really the only changes to the footprint. They will be putting on a small front porch, front entry, which actually, that, again, is less than 80 square feet, so that can overlap into the front yard setback. This floor plan is the second floor, floor plan that they are hoping to accomplish, which does not require any variances. It meets the height requirements and setback requirements. They did have to modify the height of this wall. They had to move it in a bit to meet the side yard setback requirement for that. Unfortunately, they can't really do anything with the garage addition because they're so limited in the width, and there's nowhere else really to go with that. So these are the elevations that they're proposing, a new second floor, front entry porch. All of that conforms to the ordinance requirements. It conforms to the height requirements. The area, again, highlighted in pink, would be that new addition to the home. So all portions of the expansion do conform to all the ordinance requirements, with the exception of that four-foot extension. So the primary issue is the proposed development reasonable for the site. Staff does question if the proposal is reasonable. As of January 1, 2014, the zoning ordinance was amended to require that all attached garages maintain the underlying setbacks required based on lot width. So given the lot width of this property, the minimum side yard setback is 10 feet. The current setback of the back corner of the garage is 9.4 feet. The request is to bring that garage closer to the side yard. So they will be decreasing the setback and increasing the non-conformity. Would it relieve a practical difficulty and prevent reasonable use of the property? It's true, the garage cannot expand without the benefit of a variance, given the recent ordinance amendments. Also, just the location of the house so far north on the property, there really isn't any other opportunity. The ordinance was amended to protect adjacent property by maintaining adequate distances between structures and properties. It has been determined that a 10-foot setback is adequate protection. The existing garage is already non-conforming and too close to the side yard. Are there circumstances that are unique to the property, not common to every similarly zoned property, that are not self-created? Circumstances include, again, the non-conforming status of the garage, given its existing location to the side yard, which does limit the design opportunity. However, the existing garage wall is now already too close, given the current code. Will the variance alter the essential character of the neighborhood? The zoning ordinance was amended in part to maintain the integrity and essential character of the neighborhood. Deeper setback standards were deemed appropriate to maintain that character. The request will compound an already non-conforming situation. Regarding staff recommendation, the zoning ordinance was amended to address mounting concerns regarding the size, mass, proximity, and height of tear-down rebuilds, new homes. But also, these ordinance changes affect additions to existing homes. So the existing home is already closer to the side yard than deemed appropriate by the new code, and a variance would reduce the garage side setback even more. It is difficult for staff to support or recommend approval of a variance from the recently amended code that was, as of January 1, 2014, that was considered over many months of public input, thoughtful discussion, and that, as a result, was intentionally crafted to provide deeper setbacks from side yards to preserve adequate spacing. With that, I will stop and answer any questions you may have.
Are there any questions? Thank you, Chris. Are there any questions for Chris? Commissioner Potts.
Chris, if we deny the variance, can they, how will they do this construction without, I guess what I'm asking is, would they need to seek a variance even to retain the existing garage or to rebuild on the existing footing? What would they have to leave?
Well, if they are going to, they can repair and maintain anything that's existing non-conforming. And you can also expand at the same wall plane, as long as you don't get any closer, with an equal amount of encroachment or 200 square feet, whichever is less. I don't think any of that helps them, because they want a wider garage, not a deeper garage. It's not, it's just not very wide.
But they could build the second floor addition without seeking a variance by leaving the garage where it is?
Yeah, that's, originally, they came in, and I guess they weren't, the architect wasn't quite aware of the fact that we require additional setback for height, and they had to move it in a little bit more, and they've accommodated that, and it does meet our requirement.
Thank you.
Didn't take long for this one to come after the ordinance, did it?
Well, and, you know, it's no surprise that there are some people that aren't aware that the codes have changed, and I think because there was a lot of focus on the tear-down rebuilds, I don't know if there was a realization. This certainly affects everything, including additions to existing homes.
Yeah, just a little bit more on this. Originally, the home needed to be 10 feet, but the garage only needed to be five feet, is that right?
Correct. They would not need a variance for this if they would have gotten their permit in, or if they would have known they needed to get their permit in before the end of the year. This would not have been in front of you.
So by changing that, and it was deemed we cleaned up the code, not allowing any structure closer than 10 feet, is what the intent?
Closer than, yeah.
Closer than 10 feet, intent of that, right? Any other questions for Chris? Thank you. Would the applicant like to step forward and say some words? Could you name an address, please?
Hi, I'm Kristy Mallett, 5212 Dunkridge Road. So as Chris mentioned, we've been working with our contractor Fred for a while on the expansion of the garage, and we didn't know about the new placement or the new setback. We're requesting the variance from the fact that our garage is undersized as it is, so what that does is we have limited space even for just two cars. We have issues with even pulling in our garbage cans into the garage with the two cars. When we pull into the house or into the garage, my husband has to let me and the kids out before he can pull in, because we can't open up the doors when we open up the garage. So the purpose of this, we're not trying to expand it to a three-stall, two-and-a-half, we're just trying to bring it up to a standard two-stall, which is 22 to 24 feet. Right now, I think if you're building a house, the minimum construction for a two-stall would be 20 feet, and ours is under that. So we're just trying to bring it up so we can, it'll function appropriately as a garage for a family. That's all.
Got it. Just one question. Did you have any, anything from the neighbors when you talked to them, or did you talk to them as far as items, what they thought of it?
Yeah, I did. I spoke with two neighbors, one to the south of the lot that, when Chris showed him on the houses, he was fine with it. Jane, she showed up, and then I have a neighbor right here, I believe he wants to speak as well, and he is directly behind our house. His house is not impacted by the garage. His house is sort of, my house is here, his house is over here on his property.
Okay. Any other questions for the applicant?
Oh, and I do have a note from one of the other neighbors across the street that said she was excited, and I brought that with, but I don't know if you need that.
Can you maybe give us a copy?
Okay.
Any other questions? The applicant? Doesn't look like it. Thank you.
Thanks.
So next, because this is a public hearing, if anyone wants to speak on this matter, please come to the podium, state your name and address, and again, you'll have approximately three minutes, so watch the lights when you come up.
My name is Ted Dryden. I live at 5269 Locklough Drive, and I'm the neighbor directly behind the house that we're discussing tonight. I actually came here because I had very little information about what sort of development was going to be occurring on the property. All the letter told me was that there was a 4.6-foot side yard setback variance for a garage addition and not much else, so I've, my biggest concern with development on this property is that the way the properties work is, we have almost no backyard. We have a side yard, and then we have an enclosed pool area. And so from a privacy standpoint, we have probably less privacy than most people in the neighborhood. But the way their house is, it's set a little bit over to the side, but it's still up on a hill, and we've had a lot of trouble with trying to use trees to kind of create some separation, because there's power lines and the power folks come and they start cutting down the trees. And so their house on their second story, there's a lot of large windows. It's a family area for them. It looks right out onto my daughter's bedroom, and so oftentimes, if she forgets to shut the shade and she's getting dressed, she might, you know, there's certainly privacy issues. When we're out in our yard, you can see their house kind of up on a hill, and, you know, I'm fine with it. That's the way we purchased our house. We knew that that was there. My concern is if they put a second story on their property, it's going to be extremely imposing. It'll then start to look down into the only privacy we have, which is our pool area, which is enclosed. It can look over the fence and right into the pool area, and it'll be right over on top of our kind of outdoor space, our, you know, side deck. And so I'm learning more about what their intentions are. This is the first time I've heard about any of this, and those are our biggest concerns. There aren't any other properties that I saw that have such a big footprint up high, and I could see why you might want to do it. Then you can get a nice view overlooking, you know, the pond down the way, and a nice sunset and all that sort of stuff. But for us, it's going to be, I think, a severe impact to our property value and our privacy. So I would invite anyone on the committee to come to our house and to see what we'll observe if this goes through. We do have some very serious concerns about, and I appreciate your time listening.
Thank you, Mr. Dryden.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, can you step back? Question. Commissioner Grable.
Just so I'm clear, you're the house that is behind this house, not the one that's to the side, is that right?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Does anyone else like to speak on this matter? Yes?
My name is Jane Boyle, and I am the house that's just to the north of the Mallett's property. We have the full-size lot, which stretches right from Locklough Drive up to Dunkridge. I got the letter as well, and I did phone Kristy to try and find out what the plan was going to be. Never had a situation like this before, so it was all new. My reservations are not so much that she's going to come four feet to the side closer to my property. Our house is set quite a ways back. I don't know if you can remember from the picture, but essentially, they'll be building into the side of our backyard, not into the side of the house. But I do know that there are some concerns about during the building process, the water runoff and erosion, and as Ted mentioned, we are on a very significant hill. So I think my concern is that we already have a lot of runoff coming down the hill. I want to make sure. and want to make sure that anything coming closer to my property isn't going to affect the water runoff down to my basement or Ted's basement. So that's one concern that I had. I guess also, I feel like this change to the rules happened for a reason. I think being right on the edge of the property line, it's already sort of a skewed property line the way the house has been placed, and this might make it look even more so. So, those are my only concerns.
Thank you.
Questions?
Any questions? Carrie, is it maybe worth putting up just to show where these properties are in relation to the proposed variance? I was out there driving around, there are some really steep slopes here also. Yeah, maybe you just point out Mrs. Boyle and then Mr. Dryden where their houses are.
This is the property to the north, it's a blue lot, and then directly behind, the homes are a little bit offset.
Yeah, I don't know if anyone went and drove that or looked at it, but it probably drops 20 feet, maybe more, across there. Is that approximately correct?
You said Locklloyd is 20 feet.
At least. Yeah, I don't know exactly, but it's a big slope down. Okay. Is there anyone else who would like to testify to this?
Hi, I'm Fred Nordahl, a builder that's worked on this property, and I've been working with them for about three years, and they just, they've put a lot of time and money into this plan. And I didn't know of the new changes, and I just wanted to say something about that. As a builder, I do a lot of work in Edina, and I just feel that it's not going to change any hardcover whatsoever, so there's no different runoff that's already there. I just wanted to say that, so, that's all I'm going to say. Thank you.
Carrie, just, when did that get passed by City Council? I know it went into effect January 1st.
Yeah, the-
Back in July?
Yeah, it would have been maybe August.
Okay. So that's how long that's been?
The effective date was-
The effective date was January 1st, but it was passed-
And we started working on that probably the fall of 2012, where we started the process of the amendment.
Took over a year, I know. Right, thank you.
Can I just ask a related question to that?
Sure.
So, just, I'm just trying to think through what that process looks like. If you're in the midst of a project and you might have gone in and checked all the rules early in the project and then planned out your phases, and you're probably not thinking, just to make the assumption that you're not thinking that that's changing, what might alert somebody in this case that that would have changed, other than when you show up to pick up that last phase permit?
Yeah, if you were meeting with staff regularly within last year, we were informing builders of the change, but short of that, if you weren't, you would have had to get articles in the paper, check the website, press releases, those kind of things.
Okay. All right. Would anyone else like to speak on this matter? Does not look like that, so I would take a motion to close the public hearing. Do you have a second? All for it. Say aye, please.
Aye.
Any against? Great. So I'd bring back the discussion to the commission. Any comments to this? Commissioner Grable.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sensitive. I'm sensitive to this kind of situation. My house is on the side of the lot, like this place. I happen to have a neighbor that's right next door on a narrow lot, and were they to ask for variance to move a little bit closer to my house, I would be a bit upset about that. What tends to mitigate this somewhat is the fact that next to this proposed variance is essentially a backyard rather than a dwelling. That said, they can continue and complete their project, essentially 99% of the project without a variance. I'm not particularly in favor of granting variances just to build a bigger garage. And when you look at the fact that the ordinance was recently, was changed with some more specificity, and the fact that it's hard, given the standards that we have for granting a variance, to see what's the practical difficulty in any of those factors, you know, I just have to say, you know, would reluctantly have to vote against this project.
Yes. Go ahead.
I just want to clarify one thing, especially from the perspective of some of the neighbors that have spoken. The only thing that we're asking, we're being asked for an opinion on this evening, is the garage variance. In every other way, especially after the adjustments that the builder has made, the house is conforming to code. Is that correct, Chris?
Yes.
Okay. Just for the record, I wanted that clear. Since some of the neighbors were concerned about adding a second floor or what have you, our code does provide the ability for them to do that, while it might not be a preferred style for some, or there, I absolutely appreciate some of the concerns you might have.
Commissioner Carr.
Well, you know, the ordinance requires certain setbacks, and it's my opinion that the fact that they weren't aware of the ordinance changes is not a practical difficulty. They can redesign the plans for their home. Also, I mean, there's no grace period once the law, the regulations ordinance go into effect. They go into effect. And I'm also concerned about setting a precedent for having developers come in and claim they weren't aware of the ordinance changes and that they had been planning a project a year or so ago, and were not aware of the change. So, again, for those reasons and the reasons outlined by Commissioner Grable, I would not move in favor of this.
Anyone else?
I was wondering, maybe some of my fellow commissioners who are closer to this than I am can tell me what they consider the width of a fully functional two-car garage.
I would agree with the presentation we heard. 20 feet is a standard, and you have a 16-foot wide door.
Would anyone like to make a motion? Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, I just want to say that I do sympathize with the applicant, though. I mean, I understand they're in a tough position. It looks like a very good design, but again, for the reasons I've mentioned, I feel we need to enforce the ordinance in this case and that there's not a practical difficulty.
Commissioner Fisher.
My only struggle, I totally get what's being said, and I can't disagree with any of it, but there's part of me that's sort of wondering about the special circumstance here, and I agree, I mean, you can't use that necessarily as your argument for a variance. But we wouldn't let them build this house with that garage on any other lot. We wouldn't let somebody build a garage this narrow. And in the big picture, to make this kind of investment in a house in Edina and have a sort of a non-functional garage is my concern. I don't know what I can do about that concern in this circumstance.
Mr. Chairman, if they were building a house, they would place the house on the lot, so they wouldn't need a variance.
Commissioner Forrest.
I'm wondering if it's the, if the extent of the requested variance makes it a little bit uncomfortable. What if they were asking for a one or two, or like a two-foot setback variance versus four? Would that make any difference?
Variance is a variance.
I guess for me, the practical difficulty is that we require two-car garages in Edina, and is this a truly a fully functional two-car garage by today's standards? That's why I asked the question about width. I don't know, but it is a two-car garage. So that's my, you know, question is, is it because, would it have made any difference if they were requesting a smaller variance? I don't know.
Commissioner Grable.
It's still not a-
If you were done, Commissioner.
Can I agree with you too?
Carrie, does the, does the ordinance define what a fully functional two-car garage is?
It does not. It just simply states that a two-car garage is required.
We actually tried to make that to a one-car garage, but that didn't go-
In fact, I think a tandem garage would count as a two-car garage, correct?
Any other comments?
Yes.
I was just wondering, I can't really find it here. What is the width of the current garage? 19? Okay. That was all I wanted to know.
So it's 19 feet wide, and then door is 16? Anyone else? Someone available to make a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I won't make a motion to deny the variance. I will make a motion to approve the variance. I intend to vote against it, but to get it on the table, I will make the motion to approve the variance.
Is there a second?
Second.
So, the second motion has been made and seconded. Sounds like we probably need a voice vote for this one. Jackie, if you would want to do the pleasure?
And let me clarify. The motion is in the affirmative?
The motion is in the affirmative, because I don't like motions in the negative.
So the motion's been made to approve the variance.
Aye.
Commissioner Potts?
Nay.
Commissioner Potts?
Nay.
Commissioner Fisher?
Nay.
Commissioner Grable?
Nay.
Chair Plast?
Nay. So the variance is denied. Now, this, does this go to council? No. So the variance is denied.
It can appeal to council.
It can be appealed.
They have 10 days to appeal.
Okay. Thank you. Next up is a subdivision for Homestead Partners at 6304 and 63112 Warren Avenue. I believe the subdivision is to take two lots and convert it into three, and Planner Teague will carry us through this.
Thank you, Chair. Members of the commission, that is correct. This is a proposal for a three-lot subdivision. Property is located on the south side of Crosstown Highway, intersection of 63rd and Warren. It's an aerial shot of the two houses as they exist today. This is a street view of the two homes. This is standing right on the corner. You can see there is an accessory building in the rear. What the applicant is proposing here is to tear down the two homes and the two accessory garages and build three new homes on the property. Two of the homes would access off 63rd Street and one off of Warren. 63rd Street right-of-way is located within the right-of-way for Crosstown Highway, and there's a restriction for access onto 63rd. MinDOT would have to vacate that right to prohibit access. They have indicated to staff that they're willing to do that as long as the city is okay with allowing access points onto 63rd Street. And as, let's see, I think I've got an aerial that shows there are several homes along 63rd that actually access onto 63rd. Couple of homes here to the west. So that process is in motion, that it looks as though the city and the county is willing to allow access onto 63rd should the subdivision go through. So the request before the planning commission is preliminary plat to, again, create the three new lots out of the two existing lots. Primary issue that staff considered is this plat reasonable for the site, and staff believes that it is, several reasons. First, the grading has been designed to minimize impacts to neighbors. You see, there's some ponding area that's proposed in the back. There's one condition, if the commission is inclined to approve this, we would recommend one condition be added, and that is that, and this was a recommendation from the city engineer, that there shall be no net increase in flow volume or peak rate to adjacent properties in our engineer's review of the grading plan. They believe that's the case, but we'd like to include that as a condition. In terms of the building pads, the building pad for the corner lot would be reduced slightly from what was shown here. As you see, this is the building pad that was suggested. In order for this lot to meet the front yard setback, they need to match the existing front yard setback of the home to the south, so that narrows up this building pad, but it is still a buildable lot. In terms of utilities, again, engineering has reviewed the plan, and they're recommending some alterations here, that these changes are agreeable to the applicant. Rather than extend sewer and water into the front yards as located along here, direct access or connection to city water can be obtained from the street, and we're also suggesting that the sewer line be extended in the street and not on the properties. So those changes would be required. In terms of landscaping, there are a series of interior trees, there's about 20 of them, that the applicant is proposing to remove, generally around the building pad location, and they are proposing to plant 32 six-foot-tall techniabrevites along the west lot line here to provide some screening for those homes to the west, and also plant 21 six-foot-tall black hill spruce in this location here. There's some additional techniabrevites along the south lot line as well. So they will be doing some tree replacement. In terms of the minimum lot sizes required, again, the median becomes the minimum lot size, and in the packet that was submitted, the calculation included the lots on the north side of Crosstown Highway along here. Our code specifically states those lots are not to be included, so the applicant has rerun those numbers, and that's the handout that's before you this evening, and actually, the minimum lot size and width is reduced as a result of eliminating those lots across the Crosstown. So the minimum lot size required is just over 9,000 square feet, 70 feet of width, 135 feet deep. So each of these three lots meet our minimum standards. So with that, staff is recommending approval subject to the findings and conditions outlined, and we would suggest that one additional condition as well. I can stand for questions.
Carrie, two quick questions. So, do you anticipate that the east lot on here, because of the building area allowed, was there any thing about, talking about variances for the side yards there? Just curious if that ever came up.
I did speak with the builder today, and they don't have any intention for requesting variances for that lot.
Okay.
That's not to say that someone might purchase that lot and still come forward. We can't prevent that, but doesn't obligate the city to approve any variance also.
Got you. And then, why were the lots across 62 not considered? I know we have a 500-foot, how does, how did that apply here?
Yeah, our code specifically states that if there's a major freeway, it's basically Highway 100 and the Crosstown, if that separates a neighborhood, you don't include those lots. So being across a major highway like that, it's really not part of this neighborhood, so those lots are excluded.
Okay. And you mentioned this, met staff approval from a grading and drainage plan, subject to our new ordinances?
Correct.
And they reviewed all of it and had a few recommendations, it sounds like. And they reviewed all of it, and had a few recommendations, it sounds like.
Correct. Now, each individual house will have a grading plan also, it'll need to be consistent with this overall plan, so there may be some tweaks with each individual building permit. But that, again, would be reviewed by the city engineer at that time.
Yeah, that's interesting. So what prevails then, the one they originally planned, or when the new homes come in? How does that work? Are they all treated separately, or how do we make sure they meet the intent of what happened? Or what, this approves?
If there's a significant change to the grading plan that's approved as part of the plat, we would have to bring that back for approval through planning commission or city council.
Okay.
If they stray from that plan.
Okay. Obviously, stormwater runoff is a very large issue, we've tried to get some control over here.
Right, and that's part of why the additional language that we're suggesting today.
Sure. Any quick, Commissioner Grable?
Carrie, I know this area, and it seems to me to be a pretty reasonable request. My one concern is that the lot to the west, the third lot, their driveway's going to come right out into Wyman, and I'm just not sure that's such a great idea. Has the engineer given any thought to that, or said anything about that?
Yeah, when we sat down in our department, different department meeting where we talked about this plat, that didn't come up. It's a question that I can pose to them before city council, but they didn't see an issue.
It is a three-way stop, but still, you know, having a driveway come right out in the middle of an intersection, just...
Yeah, it's a good question.
Is concerning. Commissioner Fisher?
You know, I thought the same thing, as I was looking at this, and I started thinking about, I've driven through this intersection many times, and it's not a super heavily-traveled intersection, and I started thinking about other similar areas in Edina, including the very street that I live on, where you have a T-intersection. It's actually quite common, believe it or not, that there's a driveway at the end of the T, and, which generally works fine, as long as it's not real high traffic. I just don't think it'll be that much of a concern here.
Anything else for Carrie? Commissioner Potts?
Carrie, could you go back to the lot that shows the narrow, buildable, that one? Thanks. So now, we've gotten this new information about the minimum lot size, could allow some adjustments, skinning down Lot One to give some more relief in buildable area at Lot Three. If we approve this subdivision, can the builder make any changes to lot width after that, or are they locked in?
Well, given that, let's see, the medians do drop to seventy feet, but our minimum lot width is seventy-five feet, so really, the required lot width is still seventy-five feet. We go to the median only if it exceeds seventy-five feet, or one hundred and thirty-five feet, or nine thousand square feet in area. So really, that seventy-five feet still applies there. So they don't have a lot of wiggle room. Lot Two is seventy-five feet, so they could adjust both lots over to provide a little additional room if they wanted to.
If Lot One and Two were seventy-five, they'd have a wider Lot Three to build on. So as long as they meet the other provisions of the code, are they allowed to make such an adjustment, once we approve this?
Well, once it's approved, it would be a, you know, if it's approved and the plat gets filed at the county, then they would have to come back for a lot division, you know, where we do the lot line shift. So it would still require review by the city.
Okay, well, if the applicant's here, we'll ask about that. Thanks.
Procedurally, are we just recommending to the council, or what's the effect of our vote?
This is a recommendation to the council, right?
That's what I thought. So if they made any changes based on our discussions here, they would have the opportunity to adjust that prior to the council meeting, is that right?
They could.
Okay.
Commissioner Shear?
Not that this necessarily has a bearing on our decision tonight, but as a matter of curiosity, the recommendations that staff has made with regard to the extension of the sewer and water lines, is that at the city's expense?
That's not, that's at the developer's expense.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Carr?
I had a question about the trees, and I was, I know you mentioned some trees were going to be removed, and others replaced, or new, there would be new trees planted, but in these photographs, there are some big trees, and I don't know if those are going to be maintained or not, I just wanted to ask that question. Not sure.
The trees out along the road?
Yeah, the ones along the road looked fairly large in front of the homes.
Yep, those would stay. It's more the trees on the interior. So this graphic show, there's an X through the trees, so it would be this clump in here, looks like these, this tree here, this one. And, you know, given the change in building pads, these two out here might be able to be saved.
Looks like they're moving everything on the interior.
As well as with the change in the utility lines, these two, in all likelihood, should be saved as well.
You know, I would just, if I were to vote for recommending this to the city council, I would recommend that those trees on the exterior of the lot facing the roads be preserved, and perhaps that be included in the plan.
Anything else for Carrie? Would the applicant like to speak on this? Step to the podium, and I don't think the overhead one is working, is it, Carrie?
It's not, but I've downloaded his pictures, and I will bring those up.
Good evening, district chair, members of the planning commission, my name is Steve Bona with Homestead Partners. We are located at 525-15th.
Oh, I'm sorry, you need a mic. Should be a handheld?
I can move to here, too, I was gonna use the, I suppose we're just showing the household. Thank you. Okay, start over here. Good evening, district chair, members of the planning commission, my name is Steve Bona, I'm with Homestead Partners. We are located at 525-15th Avenue South and Hopkins. I'll, you know, I only have a few comments on this, and then I'm sure there's some questions, so I'd be happy to answer those. We did have a neighborhood meeting, and the neighborhood meeting went very well. There were lots of questions, we had a good showing from the neighborhood. I spoke directly with the neighbors to the south, adjacent neighbor to the south, and the adjacent neighbor to the west, and, you know, they're probably affected more than anyone else, and we discussed landscaping, and the heavy trees that we were going to be planting on the property lines, and on both of those sides, and they seemed, they seemed good with that. The property owner in the south has a fence, there's an existing fence in the lot lines, we're going to be looking at that, and trying to preserve that as we move forward, and she was going to be in touch with me, we were discussed meeting on-site to do that. So there weren't any comments that came up that were, that were very serious. Some of the drainage questions came up. We actually believe that we're going to improve the drainage to, right now, we think there's, it looks like, on the topography, that there might be a drainage problem to the south, but with the swale that we put on the south property line and direct the water to the southwest infiltration pond, that should be taken care of and actually made better. And we do know that drainage off-site is a big issue, so we'll be watching that closely. I have, we showed at the neighborhood meeting an example of some of the homes that we have built in Edina, and that could be built here. We have some narrower lot plans like this one, and we have some wider lot plans like this one as well. And I think the neighborhood was pleasantly surprised by the architecture that we showed. These were just examples, but we don't anticipate much of a change. We've had very good success with these styles of homes in the city of Edina. We have all the conditions in the staff report, we will meet. The water and sewer was a newer one, that got brought up, and extending the sewer in connection, a direct connection to the water will be made, and so the easement off of that front, I have a new set of plans, and I was going to show it on the overhead, but we revised it, so there's not an easement on the front lots anymore, because that'll be moved, the sewer will be under the street, and a connection made to that, so yes, those front, the only trees in the front that would need to be removed are where driveways would be located, but otherwise, the new plan does show that those perimeter trees will The lot width on Lot Number Three, you know, that just came up late last week, and we do have house plans, and we have built house plans in Edina that will fit on that lot. However, before the city council meeting, we may look at an adjustment. It would be very small, because as the seventy-five-foot minimum is there, so we may be able to make adjustments, and we will take a look at that, but we can make this work, and we have some nice house plans that would work on that lot. And then the driveway issue, coming on the sixty-third street from Lot Number One, the one thing that I'll mention on that is that the garage is listed on the west side of that house pad, and there's a small G, it shows which side the garage is on, so it's on the west side, so most likely that driveway would not come out right at the intersection. So, right, the driveway would be on this side of the house, and, or the garage would be on the side of the house, and the driveway would come out somewhere on that west side, and we do not anticipate any problems with traffic there. Those are my main points, are there any questions?
Commissioner Forrest?
I share Commissioner Carr's concern about the loss of overstory trees, and I would also like to see as many preserved, and driveway design and things taking that into consideration. I was curious why you chose to use evergreen screening with the arbors and spruce on the perimeter of these three lots, because I don't consider it really a replacement of overstory trees by numbers, and maybe it looks that way, and I'm just kind of wondering why you chose to do that.
Simply, it's the best way to screen, and there's no other way to screen better than with those arbivides. I have my own home, I have, I do this all the time with arbivides, because I have it in my backyard, and they are, I cannot see through them anymore, and they grow tall, and so we discussed that with our property owner to the west, and making sure that was lined.
So this is, is it partly because of the proximity of that house to the proposed?
Yes, but the home to the south is not quite as close, those are in backyards, but I'm still doing the same thing, just because, even if it is a backyard and the house isn't that close, it's still nice to have that.
Well, and it's not unattractive, I'm just, I would like...
I understand.
It's not, I don't see it as instead of the overstory trees, I'd like to see those remain as well. And when I did the rough math, there, as far as mature trees go, they're going to be, probably need to be thinned along the way, so, but I can see where you're going to get some immediate screening this way, too, so...
Yes. And we do plan, that was just a screening plan, that I, on this landscape plan, it was kind of over and above, and that was just in direct response to the two houses that are adjacent, but we do plan to do more trees in, on the fronts and the side of the property. It's just all a matter of where the existing trees are, and where new trees can be fit in.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Nothing else. I just have a comment on that, to kind of pick up on the tree pieces, that, again, I would like to see that at least some effort is made to save the tall overstory trees in the middle of the lot. Now, I realize some are going to go away just because of that, but, for example, the ones at the corner of Warren and 63rd, it looks like there's two or three that would not have any impact, and some along Warren as well, that would, you know, minor impacts to the new building pad. And again, to echo some of the other commissioners' comments here, and how are you laying out this, both from a driveway and a pad standpoint, to preserve those trees? You know, Edina has a great tree population, these huge overstory trees, and a lot of the reason people live here and get that is because they have those in their yard, so to me, it'd be in your interest to preserve them as a selling point for these lots as well, but I'll just leave it at that, my comments are there.
And absolutely, you're absolutely right, we agree one hundred percent. This new plan shows the trees on the corner of Warren and 63rd as being saved. I don't have any that are right on the corner that are being removed, and that's probably because that house pad was narrowed up. On the old plan, it showed these trees coming out, well, now these trees are not coming out on the new plan.
Okay, that's all I had to go off from, so...
Right, I apologize, I was planning on showing it on the overhead, because these were just revised.
Okay. Any other comments? Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Bona? As this is a public hearing, now would be the time, if anyone has any comments, they're welcome to step forth, up to the podium, again, give your name and address, and watch for the lights.
I'm Kate Schumaker, and I'm at 6316 Warren Avenue, so our actually property will be to the south, we're all three of the new construction will be budding up to our whole property line. Couple of things, which he's answered some of the questions, we didn't know a lot about it until we met with the builder. We're pretty much on board, the two things, I guess the two biggest things that concern me is, well, three, is the lot line and the water drainage, and he said that, you know, with recommendations that they will take care of it, and I'm hopeful that with the new houses, whatever's decided, that nothing changes, that that sticks with it, because that impacts our whole lot line. The second piece is in regards to trees, we have a huge tree at the end of, it's not actually on our property, it's on the property next to us, so just north of us, that has completely torn up our driveway, and we've gone to the city to see who owns the tree, whether it was the city, or whether it was their property, whether it was our property. We were told from the city that it is our neighbor's tree. So when I talked to the builder, it's a huge tree, there's a lot of shade, but it has completely torn our driveway up. So I talked to the builder about how this is going to be addressed with the three, you know, the three potential construction, you know, homes that are going in there. So I definitely want that looked. I completely agree that trees need to be preserved, but this one is damaging our property, and I want it definitely looked at, and as a piece of the overall picture. And the third piece is just, as the neighbors, and we communicated this to the builder, it's just the level of construction and the traffic. I disagree, I think Wyman Bridge is a high-traffic area, we've lived there for almost twenty years. It's a huge traffic area, coming from one side of the highway to the next, school buses and whatnot. So our concern is, when this does happen, if it does get passed, that, just the consideration, and I know that, I think there are variances, I mean, not variances, but I think there are restrictions as to where, you know, what side of the road and whatnot, just that they're respectful of it, because it's going to be a huge, huge undertaking, and I've got small kids, there's kids on the high, you know, on our street, so I just want, you know, you guys to be aware of that, it absolutely is a high-traffic area, so. And I was curious, too, with the lights coming over, I mean, we have lights that shine onto our property, we do have a property fence, so it doesn't impact us as much, but, I mean, obviously, where he positions the driveway would be a huge concern from the potential purchaser, but that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Just to address your third point real quick, so we have a construction management plan in place with the city, so the builder will have to sign that before they do anything, and as parts with that, they'll have to talk to the neighbors, there are parking requirements, there's hours of operation, the city does have an enforcement officer now specifically looking at those things, so she's available to be called if there are things going on, but I would, you know, I just would ask all builders to completely abide by that, and do what they need to do to make our neighborhoods, you know, construction is dirty, but, you know, just don't let it get out of control, and don't do stupid things when you're building.
Sure, no, appreciate that.
Mr. Bona, do you have any other comments to our first two points there? The drainage and the tree?
I would, yeah, we discussed at the neighborhood meeting, meeting in person, and so we could do that, I did not get your number from that meeting, so we should do that after this. The drainage, we believe, will be substantially better. The drainage, we believe, will be substantially better for, because of this whale that we're putting in. We, by the looks of it, it looks like there's more of an issue now with the current conditions, just because the topography flows straight between your house and garage. So with the berm, it should be better. And with the tree, that is something that we need to meet out on site and look at. I don't know if a tree could be removed until I'm out there looking at it. And I have not looked at it since the neighborhood meeting.
Okay.
So that, but I'm happy to do that.
Okay. Thanks.
You're welcome.
Anyone else have any comments? Okay, seeing none. Entertain a motion to close the public hearing. Second?
All for it.
Opposed? So let's move the discussion back to the commission. Anyone want to start us out on this? Commissioner Carr.
It appears to be a very reasonable use of the land here, creative, and I didn't see any objections to it. I would move that we recommend the subdivision to the city council, subject to the staff conditions, plus two additional conditions, and that is one, the city engineer.
Maybe hold that thought for just a second. Does anyone else have any?
Well, I was just going to give, there can still be discussion.
We can get the motion on.
Okay.
Yeah, and subject to two conditions. One, Carrie mentioned the city engineer approving the drainage. And secondly, that the perimeter trees be preserved and the landscape plan be included. And again, when I say that landscape plan be submitted with perimeter trees preserved to the extent feasible.
Could I, could I read the engineer's recommendation into the, just so we're clear?
The drainage?
Yep. So there shall be no net increase in flow, volume, or peak rate to adjacent
Any other discussion?
Would we want to make, and maybe it just could be a comment in our deliberations, but that to allude to the council that there may be some slight adjustments that they would, you know, that we would be okay with some slight adjustments to the lot lines if the developer feels like that could be beneficial.
Is that a friendly amendment?
I don't know. Would we have to amend it?
It's just on the record.
I think it's just on the record.
I think it could be part of the motion and amend it to reflect that.
Any other discussion? Commissioner Forrest.
Would you say that that is without any need for variances or leave it more open-ended?
They would, they would have to come back to you if they were going to ask for variances.
Right. And I'm thinking since it's as a subdivision, I don't think you should leave variances right away.
It would be, it would be a code compliant subdivision.
Good. That's what I was wanting, thank you for saying that.
Allow them to alter it a little bit to improve it with the new information they have.
That's why I just wanted to make sure. Thanks.
Commissioner Schroeder.
The motion talked about a perimeter tree. Can, do you define perimeter tree?
I was going to ask that.
Yes, actually, my concern had to do with the large trees on the perimeter facing the roads and the, so I don't know that I was, I don't believe, I was referring to the perimeter of the lots facing the other lot, budding the other lot. So would that be a sufficient clarification?
Well, the reason I ask is because there are several trees that are actually in the right-of-way and they're not proposing to remove those until they have to put driveways in. And the question I have relates to who actually owns a tree in the right-of-way and it would seem it's not the developer that owns those trees. So Carrie, can you shed any light on that?
Yeah, the, the property owner would actually own the trees. We have the right to have a street and plow snow, pile snow, maintain utilities, those kind of things. But that would go with the property owner, the adjacent.
They would.
And they don't have to check with the city to remove them or anything? They own them, just?
Don't believe so, but I.
In fact, I would just say go down and we get to pay them.
Well, I've heard that before.
If I might, I believe what we're trying to achieve there is saving the trees that are located within what's the proposed easement on your plans this evening. So it's, it's the trees that are going to be saved as a result of moving those utility lines into the right-of-way?
I wouldn't want to identify them that way on the, because I think the council might get a different graphic that doesn't show the easement anyway. So it doesn't really identify them specifically.
They'll likely get a graphic that shows those trees being saved.
I might also add that most of the trees that are on the lot are ash. And in our, one of our upcoming items, we talk about ash not being protected trees. And so, while we don't have that ordinance in place yet, if we did, these trees available to remove, be able to be removed without, I don't want to say penalty, but without the need for replacement.
If they're ash?
If they're ash and maybe even elm, which constitutes three or four more. And I don't know that we actually identify dogwood as a protected species either, which doesn't really bother me. But it's, most of the trees that will be removed, there's only one oak that I can find on the site plan. It's the only one on the site plan that we would actually be identifying in our new potential ordinance as being protected. And that oak is being removed.
If I may ask, where is the oak?
It's actually in a, kind of on a swale between lots one and two on the south side of the pad.
Any adjustments, Commissioner Carr?
So my question is, what would you recommend then on perimeter trees?
Well, because we don't have a legal definition of perimeter, I think we just, I think what you're trying to say is where all the trees that are not showing, shown to be removed are going to be retained. And in addition, those areas that were in what was proposed in our plan and the 30-foot easement are also going to be retained as a part of the project. And I understand that that line might not be here, but tonight we have this plan in front of us. And the proposer is saying that those trees within that easement that's shown on the plan in front of us are going to be retained. And we can use that as kind of a benchmark for identifying where we will have trees in the future.
It appears that's roughly four trees then.
True, none of which are protected.
Does, does the applicant have another comment to this? We like trees.
Well, not yet.
We could go back to the presentation, couldn't you?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Because they're going to be removing trees and because our interest is in preserving trees, maybe we could have a contender, we could have a condition, if the proposer is amenable, that they bring back to the city council, a landscape plan that actually shows replacement trees in addition to protected trees.
Mr. Chair, members of the planning commission, there are, the new plan has, shows these three trees as being removed still on the new plan. But these, this tree is saved, this is saved.
Are the three you just shown, are those all ash?
This is an ash. This is an elm and this is an ash. So I can tell you, but I'm just a little bit worried about the way it was being phrased because in that, we still have to connect our services to the street where the water service and the sewer service will come in. And we're not looking at the current plan. I mean, our goals are certainly aligned. We want to save all the trees that we can. This plan does show the trees that would be removed. We could also reference those, those four trees, meaning, where's the mouse? These three still being removed along with this tree over here. But then this tree being saved and this tree being saved. Or that might be the easier way to do it, is to say that those two would be saved.
Is that, Commissioner Carr, does that address your concerns?
Yes, it sounds like we're in agreement that we'd like to have a landscape plan submitted to the city council that indicates trees that are going to be replaced or replacement trees, trees removed and preserved trees. Can they do a full landscape plan though, before they even know what house is going on there? Especially with replacement trees. And I guess I, I kind of shudder a little bit because some of these that you pointed out are elms as well, so.
I think they could in the sense of what they're saving.
For saving, yeah. Yeah.
Yes, we can. It's, it's basically this landscape plan just adjusted per the changes that were made.
Any other comments? Are we straight on Commissioner Carr's motion at this point?
Should I restate that?
Want to state it, restate it?
The motion was to recommend, that we recommend the subdivision to the city council, subject to the staff conditions in this report, plus two additional conditions. One is approval by the city engineer as to water drainage. And Carrie has the exact language on that, which I'd ask that we insert into that motion. And also that the developers submit a landscape plan showing protected trees and trees to be removed.
Is the second, are you okay with that?
Yes.
So I think we should probably do a voice vote on this. Jackie, you would want to go down the roll here?
Aye.
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 Aye. I guess we didn't need to do that, but you don't know. So this is approved. Next step will be go to council and you have the items that'll be updated to go in that direction. Of course, they'll, they'll look at the tape in our minutes as well to, to see what's there. So thanks for coming and enjoy the build.
Thank you.
And look out for your neighbors during the build. Next up are reports and recommendations. That can, excuse me, that concludes the public hearing portion of this. Up next is reports and recommendations. Couple of sketch plans on here. We'll talk about those when those come up, but those will not be public hearings. They'll be more of a QA session with the, the planning commission and the applicant. So the first one up now is the TIF resolution for Pentagon Park proposal and its consistency with the comprehensive plan. Before we start, are there any concerns on commissioners to be part of this?
Wow. All right on cue. Mr. Chair, I just wanted to, before we get into this discussion, just point out that as part of my date job, I, I do TIF analysis for probably the majority of the cities in the, in the Twin Cities area. And as part of this TIF report, it's a very large report and a very tiny part of it in the back is the work that I did. It really has nothing to do with what we're discussing today, but just, I wanted to make it clear that I worked for the city of Edina to validate that this TIF district physically meets all the state statutes. And because of that, I'll just recuse myself from the vote, even though I just want to make a point that has very little if nothing to do with what we're talking about.
Carrie, we're to essentially just say here that this meets the intent of the comp plan, correct?
Correct. The, the planning commission has asked if the uses that are contemplated for the site, if they're consistent with the comprehensive plan. The details of the TIF and approving all that is, that's the council's discretion.
Please welcome Mr. Noon Dorf.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Bill Noon Dorf. I'm the city's economic development manager. I'm here tonight to present this proposal to you and the request. I'll run through some of the basics of the request and also introduce Nick Anhut from Ellers and Associates, who's worked on our behalf, similar to some of the professionals at LHB and some of the other consultants, to help prepare this report tonight. In your packet there are some wonderful color renderings, color photos, color maps, but I think they all turned out in black and white in your packet. And I do have wonderful color images here, but I guess our overhead is not working?
[laughing]
So I will refer to gray blobs on the map as the best I can do this evening. In response to your initial, your initial question, the action that's being requested of the, of the planning commission this, this evening is to act on behalf of the city and advise whether or not the proposed TIF redevelopment plan is consistent with the general overarching redevelopment goals of the city. So this evening, there is a plan prepared by Ellers that looks at the Pentagon Park area. That area is shown up on the map, I'll try to use the little highlighter, just east of Highway 100, just north of 494, just south of the Fred Richards Golf Course. It's about a 40-acre district, originally constructed in.
And we're not here to talk about the Fred, correct?
No, correct. We're not here to talk about the Fred. We're here to talk about the, the private property to the south. It's about 40 acres and the private parcels are shown in the yellow lines here that look white. So again, apologies for the lack of graphics this evening. This facility consists of 16 parcels, 15 separate buildings, built in the late 60s. For many years, it was a market leader, but over the last four decades, it's steadily declined to the point where it was identified as a potential area of change in our comp plan. About a year ago, we met with the city council in a work session, talked about some of the overall redevelopment goals, and this area was identified as one where the city might want to consider creating a TIF district. The reason that a TIF district was first brought up was it's apparent that there is a need for the city to get involved to help stimulate and push new investment, new reinvestment in this area. So the, the report demonstrates that the district and the buildings in it are eligible for the state standards. And the TIF plan shows in general what such a project financing would look like. So again, let me stress, project financing. There's nothing in this plan that talks about land use specifically. There's nothing that talks about heights, densities, or all those types of things that you normally talk about. But in general, it's looking at creating a redevelopment district that would, that would enable the city to work cooperatively with a future developer to make sure that public or private investments, improvements in that area could happen. So think of roads, think of sidewalks, think of, think about stormwater, the fact that there is no stormwater management there at all. There's a number of those types of public improvements that would be necessary, whatever gets built there. And creation of a TIF plan would allow a financing structure to help make some of those improvements feasible. So the action tonight is to, requested action is to find that the TIF plan does conform to the general plans of the city in terms of redevelopment. And this evening, I do have, where, Nick, I do have Nick Anhut here, as I mentioned, to answer any questions. And I'm happy to answer questions as well.
Hello.
Hello, commissioners. Nick Anhut.
Hi, I'm. Commissioners, Nick Anhut. I represent Ellers and Associates, financial advisor to the city, here to support Bill's presentation. The only item that I would add to it is the procedure that's in place. Next week, actually, the city will be holding a public hearing on adopting a resolution to approve the, the TIF district, the establishment of the district. So the finding made tonight will assist the city with several of the findings that it needs to make in adopting that district. I'm happy to answer any questions at all about the financing plan.
Is there any questions for the applicant? Yes, Commissioner Potts.
One item relative to comprehensive plan. Bill, you mentioned a lot of things in terms of infrastructure and stormwater drainage. Chapter 10 in our comprehensive plan talks about energy consumption. And I would like to ask the council to seriously consider that and our comprehensive plan goals as we move forward, working between the city and the developer. There are some very. Working between the city and the developer, there are some very clear standards now out there that make the ability to achieve energy consumption a much more straightforward process than maybe it was in the past. So, I'd just like to ask the council to consider that as part of the alignment with the comp plan that this is pursuing.
We will definitely consider that. You know, and actually, let me ask Nick. Does the current plan address energy efficiency at all? Does this plan, the TIF plan?
The financing plan does not address any of those specifically. However, there are the potential for improvements. Those expenses could be reimbursed. Certain improvements could be reimbursed using tax increment dollars that are generated, and that could be negotiated with the developer in the future.
Sure. And my point is, just as we start this discussion, that's, you know, important enough to be part of the comp plan, certainly an important issue currently, so it'd be good to have it part of the discussion from the get-go.
I think what you're saying is not just completely infrastructure things, but more environmental things also.
Yes, and I'm trying to tie it back to the comp plan talks about efficiency and energy consumption as one of the goals as part of commercial. So, that's--
Commissioner Crable.
One question, and maybe Commissioner Fisher can weigh in on this. One of the requirements for TIF financing is, one of the qualifiers is deterioration of buildings. Does the fact that the developer has improved already several of those buildings have any impact on the potential TIF contribution?
Even though I'm recusing myself, I'll answer your question. Because it's a really interesting, it's a good question in this case, and it was, it's what makes this one a little bit different than a lot of TIF districts. The fact that the developer has improved, I don't have it right in front of me, but at least two of the buildings to a degree that we did not consider them substandard, even though they have all of the same underlying code deficiencies that all of the buildings have. There's two tests. One is a code test, which all of these buildings are of an age that they don't meet enough of the current codes. And then the other test is just condition of the building test. So, while most of the buildings are still, you know, in a substandard condition overall, the ones that have been improved, we felt didn't meet that test, so they are not considered substandard. But in the whole, there's still enough buildings that are, that makes this a very legitimate TIF district.
Any other questions? Commissioner Forrest.
Yeah, I think, I was just looking at our packet, if more than 50% of the buildings are substandard, then it qualifies. I guess I'm a little confused, because we're supposed to be commenting on the comprehensive plan compatibility, I think. And yet, we have a finance person here to explain the finances to us, and you, Mr. Nundorf, you said that we aren't supposed to think about use and all of that stuff, but that's what our comprehensive plan addresses, and that's what our planning code addresses, is things like height use and stuff like that. I know that our sketch plan review with the developer previously, that a number of us commented on the fact that we believe that there should be more mixed use in the area, and that things like that, location of parking, accessibility by the general public to the area. And I'm wondering, I'm not quite clear, is there any requirement for TIF money to be used to benefit the public? To what extent must it benefit the public directly? In other words, if we're talking about money being used to bring state-of-the-art computers into the office buildings that don't, you know, can it be used for that, when it's a different type of blight than, you know, the whole butt forth test of, you know, it wouldn't be developed unless you had TIF money, nothing would ever happen here. So, that's what I'm wondering if, is there any restriction, or is there any preference for the actual use of the funds?
Several good questions. So, when you create a TIF district--
There are several discrete steps. And with the Pentagon Park example that we've been talking about as a community for several months, a lot of those steps are being intermixed in a way. So-- So, this evening-- So, this evening, we're trying to focus on the establishment of the district itself. So, one, there are restrictions on how monies can be used. Minnesota state statute is very clear as far as what costs are eligible and what costs are just completely ineligible. So, we must, of course, follow those standards. But when, the second part of your question is what are their preferences? That's where it's really a local decision, where the local municipality, the city council in this case, can decide what are the types of expenses, what are the type of benefits that as a community, we really want to strive for. So, the suggestion about really focusing on energy efficiency and sustainability, that's a theme that we hear in many of our commissions and in many of our guidelines and standards. So, in my mind, that's a preference that we would be leaning towards. When it comes to things like land use, mixed uses, et cetera, that's really a separate conversation from a TIF project or a TIF district. That authority really rests with you, and I think the PUD conversation is scheduled for a couple weeks from now? So, on February 26th, that's when that land use conversation will be in front of you. So again, I know that's kind of passing the buck a little bit, but there's several different opportunities for the council and the commissions to weigh in and achieve a project, a physical built project that meets those community goals.
So, basically, we're looking at this from a higher level, in that we're looking at this area, this physical acreage, as an area that, under our comprehensive plan, we want to see improved versus what we want to see there. Is that correct?
And I would say redeveloped.
Yeah, well, that's, yeah, redeveloped. Okay. Thank you very much.
Anyone else? Anybody else that would entertain a motion?
Mr. Chairman, move adoption of the resolution.
Second? All of those four, please say aye. Any nays? Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
I don't think you want to dig too deep in that. So, the next items up, there's two items for us, a sketch plan review. Sketch plan review is a vehicle we've been using for a little over a year, maybe. What it does is allow the developer to come in ahead of time, talk through their plan, get informal guidance from the planning commission, city council, before they go through all the trouble and expense of pulling forward a full, full plan for approval. So, this is an opportunity to essentially ask questions between the parties, understand what's proposing, and for the planning commission to give comments, what they see on this. This is not a public hearing. Having said all that, if someone has particular comments, they could call or email those into the city, and they will be addressed at that time. So, if this were to come forth as a project, it would go through all the normal procedures with the city, and there would be a public hearing on it at that point. Thank you. Thanks, Carrie.
All right. Thank you, Chair, members of the commission. This is a site that you're familiar with. You reviewed a site plan back in the summer, in July, I believe it was. So, this is, property is just west of Highway 100 on Edina Industrial Boulevard and Metro Boulevard. This is an aerial shot of the existing office building, as it looks like in the summertime. The property is zone planned office district. It's highlighted there in the kind of darker yellow. Notice that across the street to the south, this is the Shell gas station and the Burger King. All that property is zoned commercially, planned commercial district. However, our comprehensive plan guides that site for industrial use, so we have an inconsistency in our comprehensive plan. The site we're looking at is actually guided office. What they're proposing to do is change the use here from office to retail, so that would require a rezoning and a comprehensive plan amendment. And I mentioned the site to the south, that should an application be made here, we should clean that entire, that entire site up. This area is located within our comprehensive plan as an area of change, and with that, anytime a rezoning is requested, we consider, do we want to do a small area plan? When this came through the first time, the council concluded that we don't need to do a small area plan, that we can just look at this site on its own. So, with that, the first time through, the applicant was looking at repurposing the building, using the existing building on the site. So, they're back before us with a proposal to tear that building down and build a couple of new, new structures on the site. So, today, the site is about a little over 12,000 square feet, and what's proposed here is just over 9,000 square feet. So, the square footage has been reduced from the first time that we looked at it. You might recall that they were short parked. Per code, this plan would meet our parking standards. So, to look at the site plan, the drive-through has been relocated to the rear of the site, and you saw the pickup window along the side. They're proposing sidewalks along the roadways with the boulevard-style sidewalk. Today, that site exists with no sidewalks out there, and there's actually quite a bit of foot traffic in this neighborhood, especially during the lunch hour. So, to look at our code requirements based on the planned commercial district standards, the proposed site plan meets all of our code requirements in terms of setback, building height, building coverage, floor area ratio, and the number of parking stalls that are actually overparked on the site. So, a couple of things to consider, as you'll note, our next item on the agenda is a sketch plan for the property right next door. Now, the staff has been encouraging them to be in contact and consider maybe developing together, doing some kind of a creative site plan. Those discussions have taken place, but it doesn't sound like there's an agreement to do something together. That's something to consider. Potential rezoning, we could consider a PUD here, especially if we do the two sites together, or planned commercial district too, which is the same as the zoning to the south. Part of the joint development in what staff was trying to accomplish here, you'll note on this aerial, there are four access points onto Edina Industrial Boulevard. Each site has two access points. Ideally, if we could have just one that would align with the Shell station to the south, and then have some type of a joint access for left turns, say for the property to the east, that could come across and then make a left-hand turn at the stoplight. Even if the sites develop on their own, we would be looking at just one access point for this lot and one, one for each lot essentially, so we're still reducing from four down to two, which would be an improvement over the existing conditions. So, with that, I'll stop and answer any questions that you might have, and the applicant is here to make a presentation as well.
So, just one quick question, Carrie. Do you, I know this is ahead of it a little bit, but with two of these lots together, you know, would the council consider a small area plan needing to be done at this point because of both these things going on?
That's something that we could consider as part of the sketch. That's kind of our traditional procedure as part of this. So, maybe having two of them together, they could reconsider that.
Commissioner Forrest.
Just to pull off of your discussion about the traffic and the entrances, I may be mistaken, but I sort of recall in, when they did the previous sketch plan review, that the city engineer was concerned about the proximity of even the driveway on this property, the eastern driveway being rather close to the intersection, the stoplight to the east. And so, it would pretty much be in the same place, though, as the driveway that was previously discussed, but it would still reduce the number of access points, I totally get that.
Yeah, I think the concerns they had was the proximity of this drive aisle to the intersection here, and this one here. So, the proposed access points on each of the site plan would shift this driveway over to this location.
Yeah, I think it was, they wanted to eliminate the one to the east on this property in order to, or the recommendation, in order to pull the traffic away from the access to the freeway to the east. But, things change.
I know they wanted to get rid of one, I don't remember which one.
I just remember something, and I thought it was concern about the intersection to the east, but--
Any other questions for Planer Teague? Thanks, Carrie. Don't go too far. Would the applicant might like to make a presentation here? If you could state your name and address when you come to the podium, please? You'll need the handheld mic.
Great. Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Chair. David Anderson with Fraunshu Companies, 7101 West 78th Street is our address. And appreciate the opportunity to address the planning commission tonight. I think Mr. Teague outlined for you the approach we're taking to the site right now, and a lot of what you're seeing tonight is reflective of some of the comments we took from the planning commission in our previous sketch plan discussion. Improved site circulation certainly is part of that, which we do here with this concept plan. We also address the parking situation, the need for this type of retail, which would be service, food-related, a lot of those types of retail that will serve this business district and provide the adequate type of parking that's going to be demanded here. The pedestrian improvements were mentioned, you know, certainly an important part of the plan as we see it, being necessary. Those improvements don't exist today, and the project would allow us to proceed with constructing those types of improvements, which would be a great benefit to the neighborhood. So, the reduction in the square footage certainly helps the plan from a feasibility standpoint in our view of things. Certainly, want to be sensitive to the size of this site. This is about a 1.3-acre parcel. So, it's a very small parcel, and the scale of development is reflective of that. So, we think it'll be a very well-designed type of product. I think you saw from the rendering, what we're driving for is a, you know, high quality of architecture for retail development, and so that will, you know, certainly be part of the effort going forward. The entrance, we would consolidate that entrance on Edina Industrial Boulevard down to one location. What you see here is that being on the eastern portion of the site, which would align with the entrance to the fuel station to the south, an approximate location. So, further discussion about that, but that allows us to contain and control the flow of traffic and circulation for the customers to this site. And I think that's the most important part of what we're trying to accomplish here, and why providing access through this parcel to other parcels for pure convenience really doesn't, really doesn't make a lot of sense in this type of site plan. So, alluding to that discussion, we could talk about this perhaps more once you learn a little bit about the adjacent site plan. But that's the constraint and the challenge that we're seeing here, really to have this project work well. The customers and the parking has to be working well for the retailers that are there. So, I just leave it at that, and our site planner's here with us this evening, and will answer any questions.
Great. Well, thanks for bringing this back in again. I'm glad you listened to many of our comments, and I'm sure we'll have a few more tonight along the way for your consideration. Thank you. Commissioner Forrest.
This is just impressions, and I'm not saying I'm totally negative on it, but this is what we're here for, sketch plan reviews, just to give feedback and clarification, if I'm way off base. I know that Planer Teague mentioned that if need be, people could go out onto Metro Boulevard in order to make a left turn at a light onto Edina Industrial Boulevard, but then I noticed if they go through the drive-through, they're just driving in circles around that lot to get back out, so during times where if the traffic's busy, too busy to comfortably make a left turn onto Edina Industrial Boulevard. And then, one thing that, I like the plan better than before, certainly, and I don't have any specific suggestions, but once again, we have buildings in a sea of asphalt, and it's not really a pedestrian-friendly view. And then, you've also then kind of alienated the pedestrians by putting a drive-through too, that they probably shouldn't be crossing over. So, I would like to see some, anything that helps make this more pedestrian-friendly, pedestrian-attractive. that helps make this more pedestrian-friendly, pedestrian-attractive.
I guess I have, I was not here the first time this was reviewed, but I look at the site plan, and you note in your letter the orientation to pedestrians, but there's no, there's sidewalks around the perimeter, but no way to walk directly to a building. If you could actually find your way across the parking, you end up with a five-foot sidewalk in front of the building, would probably have a three-foot door opening into that sidewalk, so it's really not pedestrian-oriented, as you say in your letter. And I think it's actually got a long ways to go. In addition to what Commissioner Forrest was saying, there's basically no interior landscaping except for on tiny little corners or strips alongside of the building, a four-foot strip along the north side, and a tiny little bit up against the drive-through, which would probably disappear when you put an order board in that location. So I'm not convinced that the landscape here is actually doing anything to support some of our larger goals, and it certainly, as the site's configured, it's not orienting itself to the pedestrian, as you mentioned it. I think the other kind of big concern I have, well, two big concerns, I guess, is one is kind of the contra-flow nature of the drive-through. It's heading west as people are coming off of Metro Boulevard, heading east, and it has potential to be being confusing. There's no separation, there's no definition, and so you have cars in kind of an unexpected condition for drivers who are entering the site from Metro Boulevard. And then the last.
Maybe this is not.
There we go.
We'll have to start over. The last thing that I, as we look at kind of an evolution in land use here, I keep wondering how this is going to orient, and it's interesting that these two are happening kind of sequentially here. We looked at one time about a more wholesale evolution of what we at one time called Cahill Gardens, this whole area, and we're looking now at a very incremental kind of evolution of this on a kind of a small parcel next to another smaller parcel, without really understanding from our position how it's supposed to evolve. And one of the things that the small area plan would allow us to do is begin to understand, if it's not the entirety of that Cahill area, it's at least this area, this part of it, which seems to have a lot of uses that might be synergistic, but when they're developed in this way on a lot-by-lot basis, we don't really recognize any of the benefits of that. I don't know that we can tell a developer to work with a developer next door, but our small area plan process is intended to try and align redevelopment and rezoning with some of the broader goals that we have as a planning commissioner of community.
Commissioner Potts.
Back to the site plan, I think you've got some room to work to push around some of these buildings, to add some green space. You're significantly overparked. We only require 51 parking spaces, according to the table here, and you're showing 66, so there's certainly some room to work to get pedestrian access and to add some green space, and I would definitely encourage you to do that. In the spirit of sketch plan review, the only other thing I'd add, and maybe with a question for Carrie about trash removal here, it looks like your trash is in the northeast corner of the site, which, if that's where it is, is a long haul from the coffee shop. I don't know if we require interior trash rooms, or if we let them be fenced outside, but that jumped out at me.
Yeah, we don't have a requirement either way. Our requirements just mainly center around the screening of the enclosures, but we don't require them to be inside or out.
Okay, thanks. That's all I've got.
Commissioner Carr.
Well, I guess I'm in agreement with the other commissioners' comments in that it appeared to be overparked, not a lot of green space. If we're trying to, well, first let me say, I do like the concept of the two separate buildings. I like that visually, I think that's nice, instead of one long building, adds some variety from an architectural standpoint. But if we're trying to make it pedestrian-friendly, I think we want to make it pedestrian-friendly from the street, so you've got sidewalks, but here you have all the cars, and I don't know if we ever talked about this before, moving the parking lot, parking spaces to the back of the lot. Then you have the buildings moved forward with even more green space, and so pedestrians walking by see some more green space, they have sidewalks to the buildings, and the parking, which is not attractive, is moved to the rear of the lot. So I don't know if you've considered that or not.
I just don't want people backing in at the drive-through.
Right, yeah.
Mr. Chair, would you like, I could address some of the, if you wanted to comment, maybe start here with the commissioners' comments.
And our site planner will talk maybe about some of those circulation aspects and, you know, that pedestrian-friendly orientation, you know, how we get there. I think tonight, what we, again, are looking at, sketch plan review, the concept of retail, we need to rezone, we need to re-guide, you know, generally speaking, do we feel we're taking that in the right direction? All these comments are very helpful. Again, I think only from here can we make enhancements that provide some wider sidewalks and plaza seating for some of the retail uses, restaurant uses and the like, and so forth. I'm going to have Nick speak to the circulation and that orientation layout of buildings and why they look the way they do versus other alternatives that we considered for the site.
If you could just wait, maybe, does anyone have any other, I have a couple of comments and one, Mr. Commissioner Grable.
Yeah, just before that, I too like the idea of the retail in that area, that side of the street needs something like that. I would make a comment, however, with respect to, in particular, Commissioner Carr's comment about moving the buildings towards the street. We have had that as kind of a pole star for some time, and I'm not sure we do a very good job with it. I'm thinking of places along France Avenue where we've moved stuff towards the street. One development in particular is just awful, as far as I'm concerned, and if we're going to require developers to think about moving buildings towards the street and moving parking towards the back, I think we've got to do a better job of it because we haven't had a lot of success with it. We've tried it, and some of the results we've had have been bad, so I think we have to be careful with that.
So I just had a couple of comments, and some of these you've already heard, but I'll reiterate them. So I, you know, why are all the parks here, I guess? I think you're over by, was it 12 cars? That's one thing. Why do we build them if, do we need them? I would ask that question. Could it be green space, or maybe more GLA? I don't know, those pieces to that. One of the thoughts is, and this is a little out there, I'm concerned as Commissioner Shoder brought up, the drive-through and coming in from Metro Boulevard, how people would get in there, and I could see a lot of, I guess, three-point turns happening there potentially with people trying to get back into the drive-through. So have you considered moving actually that drive-through, you know, just flip-flopping it on the site, so that's on the east side of the site? And then you would have, you know, you go around the building to get there as well as coming from a metro, you would also be able to kind of a straight shot into there versus how it is now, and I'm a little unclear how you get there right now, and maybe you can go into those details. But also the pedestrian access, I was a little disappointed when I saw this, that it wasn't more towards the street. I'm not sure it should be on the street and parking all behind, I'm not sure on that, but it, you know, it's set so far back, and there's a whole row of parking in between, so that's what you're really going to see. And I know retailers want the parking to be shown in front, but there's a way we can potentially address both here that does give more to the pedestrian experience as well as the, and I know this site's going to be mainly drive-up, I mean, being around here, but nevertheless, we want to, as we go forth in this city, we want to have people to have those options where, you know, what, could they even walk before? Maybe not, so that's why they didn't, but we want to give them those opportunities. And then, and just a concern on how many, and this, you know, the next project as well, how many ingress, egress access points to the site from both directions, and what does that do to the street? There's just a lot going on there right now, and I think one of the recommendations before was to minimize those, which you have for the most part, but I'm, you know, just in that similar thing, I'm concerned about the project next door and that does as well. Again, landscaping comments that Commissioner Shoder brought up, I see a lot of asphalt here, and is there a way to intersperse that with shrubbery or something so it doesn't look, just it looks like a sea of parking at this point, and where is the pedestrian experience? So Commissioner Carr.
Yeah, I just, you know, I was, I threw out the moving the buildings forward, because I know that's been discussed many times here at the planning commission, but, you know, if that is not an option, for whatever reason, there's those, just to add maybe some more greenery and maybe some benches or something, there's like three or four parking spaces that are directly in alignment with the road that goes between the two buildings, so you're going to have people coming and going, backing out into that area, at least it appears to be a road. Is that a road between the two buildings? So you have like, I don't know, you don't have that up on the screen, but, or you do, I guess, it's those, about right in the middle, right in the middle of the parking lots. Yeah, of the parking spots. You could take out about four there, maybe put an island of green there with a tree and a bench that's accessible by the pedestrians, and then just again, trying to make it more pedestrian-friendly and not have as many parking spaces when perhaps that's not needed. For the office and, first of all, for the retail spot, the tenant retail, you have that nice area where you have tables planned, and I'm just wondering if you couldn't add a similar concept to the office retail building on the other side, and bring that curve around and make another little area, patio with tables, so that the whole place looks friendly, usable, people want to come to the place.
Yes.
Is that one more? Commissioner Shear.
Nothing real novel coming out here, but could you do, just do us a favor, could you, using your, I think there's a pointer you can use on the screen, if I'm a car coming in off Metro Boulevard and I want to go through the drive-through, what's the path I follow? All the way through the site so that I can exit?
Yeah, do you want to address the floor?
I'm Nick Spriedes. I'm the architect, Spriedes Reiner's Architects.
Thank you.
The path is circuitous. How's this? We're going to bring you in here, we're going to bring you around the building here and bring you into the drive-through this way. So you'll go around the site to get, if you're coming in off of Metro Boulevard. Okay, so it's this path, and around, and here. That'd be the only way, otherwise you're going to have to pull in, pull back out, do the three-point turn. So inherently, the drive-through has been a part of this project, the most difficult because there's two points of access. Excuse me. So we've tried to accommodate, I think in our minds as a team, we've always seen most of the traffic coming in off of Industrial Boulevard, where it can come along here and pull into the drive-through, accommodate the stacking. That's what we see most of the time. Is that going to happen all the time? No. Is it the only way? No. But at this point in the planning.
I just see a lot of three-point turns.
That's possible.
So my comment would be.
Oh, and can I just also address the question of the flip-flop? It puts the drive-through on the wrong side of the building, and then puts the drive-through then on the inside, where you have the drive-through and the traffic together. You have to be on the driver's side, so.
Yeah, so you, yeah.
Well, then the entry would be facing, then there wouldn't be any stacking space coming off of Edina. We have to have space to stack.
No, I'm saying, take the drive-through from the rear of the site back through.
From the rear? So the drive-through would be on the north side of the building?
No. Okay, imagine this, just completely flip this to the other side.
Take this building and just move it.
Completely flip the two-tenant retail to the other side.
It eliminates, from the experience of drawing this picture, many times the stacking space is what becomes the problem, putting it on the other side. The conflict with the entrance point is what we ran into.
You've already, it's an entrance point, and, you know, if you had it on the east side of the building, the window, you could simplify the routes to get to the drive-through window from both directions somewhat, I mean, it's, it makes some sense to me, too.
We'll certainly take a look at it and.
Because right now, you've got, like was said earlier, you've got people coming in off Metro Boulevard, maybe having to make a three-point turn, they're opposing traffic coming right at them from both sides, and it's just really, really messy.
Just to clarify, the building would be on the east side, the drive-through would be on the west side.
Correct.
So maybe we had a little cross there.
Correct, no, I understand. And we've drawn many reiterations of the plan, and only to tell you that the plan that provides the least conflict and the most efficiency with parking was this one, based on the commentary we got from, and what we looked at after the last sketch plan review. So, but we will look at it, we'll try putting that smaller building. Again, it has to do with the presence of the building and how the retailer.
I certainly realize why you want that at the corner, but having said that, I think you've heard it here a lot, is just how you get to that drive-through as it's configured.
Understood. Can I address the parking and landscaping as one? Definitely, there will be more landscaping because we are overparked, and at this point, understanding, we're getting a sort of a concept discussion with you, we'll meet all the requirements of green space, landscaping, and find points at which we can bring pedestrians from that sidewalk across the parking lot in a safe fashion to the building, creating some outdoor dining space like we've done on the two-tenant retail building, pockets where tables and umbrellas and landscaping can occur, and that's definitely the spirit of what this project is about.
Commissioner Grable.
You know, maybe developers ought to consider the fact that across the street at the Caribou Coffee Shop, there is no drive-through, and this idea that you've got to have a drive-through seems to me, if you just get away from that concept, you eliminate a lot of monkeying around with this stuff with the aggravation of the people here at the planning commission. I don't think you need a drive-through, and it'd be a lot easier if you didn't have it.
I'm not sure their tenants would agree with that.
Well, maybe, but like I said, the Caribou across the street does a land office business, and they don't have a drive-through. If you want your coffee, you park your car, you walk in, you get your coffee, and you walk out, and you get your coffee, and you get in your car. And it probably takes less time than the jokers up here at the Starbucks waiting in line, blocking people from the restaurant and every other place, too lazy to get out of their car and go in and get their coffee. So, you know.
That soccer mom might disagree with you, with three kids in the car. Possibly.
Just to finish this whole thing that I started, I'm sorry. I would say the circuitous route is a little too circuitous for me in the spirit of sketch plan review, and I am someone that will regularly drive through to get my coffee. So I'm an expert on this stuff. The other observation I would make that is disappointing to me, and I, but I think it could be dealt with, with the, maybe some slight adjustments in the elimination of some of the parking. I love the idea of public spaces, being able to sit outside and have your coffee, et cetera. I love the idea of the increased sidewalk access, and I see more foot traffic in that area as I drive through it. It's not too far from my home. But I don't like the idea that there is really no safe way, short of walking right through a drive-through lane or traffic, to get from that sidewalk to this coffee building. That strikes me as a major drawback in the plan.
If you flip it to the other side, you could do that.
Thank you. Just a couple of quick comments, and one, you know, certainly, and we've heard loud and clear, is landscaping, some green elements, maybe some more sidewalks and patios, those types of things certainly are going to respond to the kind of tenants we are talking to and will be working with. These are high-quality, very desirable neighborhood-type services, restaurants, and the like. So what you're seeing here is a reflection of what site selectors for these types of tenants look for, that visibility, the signage, the quality of architecture, and they're expecting also that customer experience to be right on. So the idea of having some pedestrian connectivity, we have to work through those details, and we will. So certainly tonight, we wanted you to get the context of the magnitude and the scale. That additional parking we have here, and we've heard the comment, are we overparked? I think last time, you know, we were hearing, you know, we were probably, and we were, I think, underparked.
A lot bigger building then.
Yeah, and it's a bigger building, so we reduce the square footage. I think we'll know because we expect more dining. I think we'll know because we expect more dining establishments, which are going to be potentially a higher requirement even than code. So we just want to mention that, that there will be some types of users and uses that are going to really expect a higher parking ratio. We're not, you know, extremely high, you know, we're not ten to one here, we're six and a half to seven. So, you know, we're in that zone that's gonna make that very comfortable. The flow and the traffic, as we talked about, you know, we'll look at that and we'll come back. I think Mr. Teague suggested, you know, even looking at traffic flow as part of a site plan submittal, and we intend to do that so you can be informed on how traffic's really gonna move in and around and out of this site. That access point on Edina Industrial Boulevard, we think we can improve that by bringing it down to one and having that placed in the right place on the Boulevard into the property. So those are really the overarching themes that we have. Some, a lot of that pedestrian traffic, by the way, is coming from the north, the one corporate center, Office Park and so forth. And so as we've thought about this and something we'll think more about is that sidewalk connecting from the north, you know, certainly people are gonna flow through and want to cross at the intersection as well, we're providing a sidewalk for that, we're providing a sidewalk from the east. You know, perhaps we can create a pedestrian way into the site on the north side of the parking as well. We have green space there, so maybe we can work that into the plan, so, you know, people can literally come in to our site from that standpoint as well. But those tenant entries, widths of sidewalks, making it very comfortable and open and well-lansched, are certainly gonna be the direction we're gonna take this.
So just one more, I don't know if anyone else, but, you know, go mark this driving up somewhere, put a bunch of cones out and see what it takes to get there. It's not that big of a site, go open lot and just mark it off and, to your point also, Commissioner Shear, people aren't gonna do that, they're gonna find the shortest way to get somewhere.
Yeah, it's too circuitous.
Yeah, they're gonna.
We've had a lot of experience with drive-through restaurants in our firm's history, and I would say that more than likely this, when we get a tenant, they'll have directional signage that will tell you the points of entrance. Metro, the exit, or the entrance on Metro probably isn't where they're going to want to bring in the traffic for their drive-through. So I'm thinking that the drive-through traffic is gonna come from Edina Industrial Boulevard, but, and most of the time, I think it would be a very big problem bringing in drive-through customers from Metro. But most of the traffic is along Edina Industrial Boulevard. But again, that usually gets dictated and brought to our attention by the tenant, they are scientific about their drive-throughs, so.
But this is my experience, people don't use signs or they drive the shortest direction, so I'll just drop it at that. Any other comments?
I really, I'm still very troubled about the circulation, I guess, because of the drive-through. When you were saying, oh, parking, so you could anticipate, this could have like two or three restaurants in this one site in the future? Well, when you think about how we want to see things go in Edina and that we want to increase pedestrian activity and liveliness in a neighborhood, having a couple of restaurants or even the single coffee shop, that can be actually an instigator for people to walk from their office building down to the entire commercial area. So I guess, I think there is a really good point about, do we really even need a drive-through? And I know that many coffee tenants, they say that's the whole business model. But I think we need to realize that in light of our goals, this could and should be a draw to, you know, to accomplish those goals, which is to engage the neighborhood more. And so everything you can do to foster that, I think, is really, really important at this point because this is, this is raw stuff here that we're talking about and we have the opportunity to do it in a manner that really augments the city. So I appreciate your careful consideration of everything, so thanks.
Okay, I'll take.
I had one quick comment, I'd like to comment on your comment about the buildings being pulled to the streets and oftentimes in a lot of the cities that we've worked in, it's a mandate, it's a desire, it's, we want to be urban. And to apply it to sites like this that aren't urban, that are industrial or office, it's a, it's a beautiful thing when it works, but when it doesn't work, I know the building you're talking about and I think, I agree with you in some cases, so thanks for that comment.
So just, if, I kinda got three themes here and Commissioners can agree or disagree, the biggest things I heard were about circulation, we went through that many times. Also pedestrian access to these buildings, how that's gonna work. And then also less parking potentially, more common spaces, more landscaping throughout the site, making kind of, a couple pedestrian big themes here, I don't know if I missed anything or that kinda covered it for the most part? Okay. Well, thanks again. Look forward to seeing you back.
Excellent. Thank you.
So I hope you're staying in the audience for the next one, right? Okay, thanks.
Site. Here's a rendering of what the existing building looks like, it's the building on stilts down there, this is just off the entrance off, or the exit off of 100 as you're heading toward Edina Industrial Boulevard. A look from industrial, Edina Industrial Boulevard coming into the site. So what the applicant is proposing here is to take down the, just over 20,000 square-foot office building that we just saw, and then build this 16,000 square-foot retail building. They would have a drive-through at the north end.
Drive-through.
Location here. Again, eliminating one access point and just having the one access in and out of the site. A rendering of the building itself, and the applicant has some additional renderings that he'll be showing different angles from the building, so he's. Test, test? Okay. So he'll have more to show you from, from what I've got here. In terms of the code review, this site, several variances would be required in addition to the rezoning, again, in the comprehensive plan amendment. The front setback for Edina Industrial Boulevard would be 12 feet, variance required there from Highway 100, 15 feet variance there. This site would be underparked, 97 stalls required based on, the square footage is proposed, 75 is proposed, and the parking stall setback is five feet as proposed, so several variances in addition to the, to the comp plan and rezoning. So with that, I can stop there, answer any questions that you might have. And Dean DeVolos is here to present the project as well.
Any questions for Carrie on this? Commissioner Carr.
Could you show us where the set, where the variances would be on the plan?
Certainly, so this is that front setback, this is the 12-foot setback here. Variance would be required to this property line, this is the 15-foot setback. And the parking space, they're proposing a five-foot green space along this lot line and this lot line. So those would be the variances and then the parking stalls, number of parking stalls.
Thank you.
Commissioner Potts?
Carrie, do any other city departments look, review these before a sketch plan review or does that take place afterward?
We do, we don't have a lot of detail, you know, we're just looking at this site plan, but we did have engineering and the fire department take a look at this. Their first preference, again, would be to have one access point off of Edina Industrial Boulevard, but still recognizing the fact that we have four access points now and that even if the site's developed on their own, we'd have one each, and so there would be an improvement should they stay separated.
Did any concerns come up with visibility as you exit Highway 100 and turn right to go on Industrial Boulevard? I mean, as tight as the building is to that, you know, where the setback variance is required, I could, you know, that looks like, like not much visibility for a driver turning right.
Yeah, that's a good point. That came up, you recall the sign variance that we did on this site a while back and the visibility around that sign, so moving the building up that far, that certainly would be a concern. Thanks.
I'm just curious, so it's a divided roadway, right? So what are you trying to see at that intersection?
There's no, there's no median though.
Uh, yeah, there, you can make a left turn.
It's difficult, but you could.
Coming out.
Oh, I see, so the visibility coming out of the parking lot, yeah, that could be a problem. Well, the way to solve that is just put this thing on stilts.
Hey, great idea. Anything else for Carrie? I don't wanna get too punchy here yet. Commissioner Horst.
So it looks like then, when the entrance to this would be pretty close to directly across from another entrance on Edina Industrial Boulevard, is that correct?
That's correct. There are two entrance points into the gas station. There's the one right here, this is the, a little bit larger, that's where the sketch plan that we just looked at, the driveway would line up here. This one would somewhat line up with that one across the way.
Do you know if there's a bus stop anywhere near here? I'm just curious.
That I'm not sure.
Okay. Thanks.
Thanks, Carrie. Would the applicant like to step forward and make their presentation? And again, it's, this is meant to be an open discussion to get feedback from both sides.
Which, how do I advance?
That looks familiar.
He's a clicker? Okay. Good evening and really been good evening since it's almost 10. Dean DeVolos, DJI Architecture, 333 Wash Avenue, North Minneapolis, Minnesota, and also Residente Edina. I have this building up on your screen for really two reasons before I get to the main proposal we're talking about. This is one you guys actually reviewed probably a year and a half ago, and this is probably the first PUD project that went through the process. I just want to say, because of that, this building has won an award already from the International Council of Shopping Centers for Design, and I just want to give credit for City Council and Planning Commission for working through this, so this has actually served well. Another reason I have this up here is that.
Because we made you keep your windows up on top there?
Yes, that's why. You held true to the plan, even though the tenants, this tenant didn't want to, but TD Ameritrade was great about it, so sometimes it varies as you go through the process. And the other reason, some of the concepts we see in this building are gonna be applied at the 5100 Edina Industrial Boulevard, part of its, the pedestrian access to it and orientation, part of its materials and how it's situated in the site, so just sort of gonna use that as.
Mr. DeVolos?
Yes.
This was not the building I was referring to.
I had that fear by thinking, go brave in a battle and have at it. And it's like, I can't, I can't turn back now. And so, I appreciate that, thank you. So anyways, just the other view of it, so, oops, any trick on making this advance?
Is there a keyboard there?
It goes back, oh yeah, there is, thank you, of course, okay. So here's our site right here, now if this has a cursor, which is the old building on Distill to be referenced. And so the basic approach we took was to really move the building and address the corner, it's really two reasons for that. One, to sort of give it a presence and a gateway, sort of like the previous building I showed, to sort of give an identity to the area. Two, to align the driveways, as you mentioned, for traffic, 'cause as you talked about, there's the two driveways here and here, so putting the building here allows this to flow through. Three, to the dreaded drive-through, to put it in back screen, so out of sight, out of mind, but relatively easy access to, so that was the other purpose. And the reason is that, you know, when we worked with Franch and met, you know, we talked about making an access here, but they said, you know, our cross-traffic affecting our parking would be uncomfortable, and I respect what they said. So through Mark Krog's ability, we met with the temple next door and they are willing to give us a cross easement through their site and a connection, which is sort of a good thing for two purposes. One, their parking is only used on Sundays and Saturdays, ours is very intense during the week, and so what we want to do is work a cross-use agreement so that asphalt can be used twice as opposed to once. So when they're empty, we would use some of theirs for employee parking and on the weekends when ours is slow, they could probably use our parking lots, they have a cross-use. And the other purpose, it gives another way out of the site, so through their lot up here on top, you can see the cursor, it provides a second means of egress so that everything doesn't have to come across as one point, so it actually provides a nice deal of efficiency of parking, common use and more interconnections within the area amongst all these sort of buildings, you know, that are isolated within their own parking lot. So that really sort of worked out well in terms of that concept, they're happy with the arrangement and we are too in terms of the process. Oops, what did I do wrong here? Ah, shoot, let me just click it forward and make that go, I hope. Carrie, I did something wrong. Right here? And make this one where it ends there? There we go, thank you. I grabbed the wrong one, so let me get in the right direction here. So here's a little more close-up of the building, and again, the alignment of driveways, the connection to the temple for the common parking. The drive-through is screened behind a masonry wall, and you say that when I get to the elevation, so this is all screened, tucked between the buildings, so it's out of sight. Our parking field is here, and then the sidewalks, as I showed through the trees, would connect up here and then connect down through here. We intend on keeping the trees on the east side of the building, there's a set of mature trees and we trim them up, but they're tall enough, so it actually works pretty well because you can view under the trees inside of the, visibly the retail. So keep the, and tag, this side will keep some of them, but, you know, we need some for the parking, so probably other, everyone may be removed to make this work. And then this in the site may develop for outdoor dining, coffee shop, is a very extent it's worked through the site. The building's approximately 16,000 square feet, as I said, will be arranged along this side of the site. Let me go to this one so I don't make the same mistake. So this is a view looking from Edina Industrial Boulevard, looking towards the building, so this would be the west face of the building. And some of the materials, you know, we're looking at is again, sort of the same stone that you saw in the previous building on 7th and France, glass and then a butterfly roof that does two purposes, sort of give the building an identity and openness and also screens of mechanical equipment. So the idea would be a gateway building to sort of signify an entry into this portion of Edina, and also the idea is that a portion of it would meet the street now, so we can play with the setbacks in terms of parking visibility, but the idea is that part of it would meet the street and sort of create a pedestrian connection, and if the tenant wishes has outdoor dining, that would be feasible within the building right here. And then the other view of the building, oops, keep going the wrong way here, sorry, this is looking from the freeway side. And again, the same type of architecture, probably more stone because this is a part that's gonna be less open, but again, the same idea of really emphasizing a corner, creating a sense of gateway into Edina when you come around that corner and sort of create a setting, again, the idea of keeping that collar of trees on the freeway side because those are sort of a significant kind of piece of the building, they've matured, they survive well. The ones on the east side, we can keep some, but those haven't, the west side I should say, but those haven't done as well because it's interesting, these, these have grown much bigger because there's more green space associated with them. The ones in east are smaller, but we'll keep some of those to keep that basic layout within the project. So that's a quick sort of overview of the project, so I stand for questions, comments and ideas, so thank you.
Thank you. Any comments? Commissioner Shear.
I like, I remember that we talked a lot in the design phase of your other building, the Vitamin Purveyor, that we liked the stone, more stone. the Vitamin Purveyor, that we liked the stone, more stone, more glass, and it worked apparently, and I like it in this building as well, I like that in the design. I do like the street access at the front, if we could get some more direct, you know, I just want to be sure we have sidewalks or some way for people to come right in if they are going to walk onto your property, that's important to me.
And that would be right here, and then the sidewalk would, you know, go along the front of the building.
Run along, okay.
So you'd have pedestrian access coming up, from each of the sidewalks, we'd connect them from there, come to this point here, and then across into the building.
Okay, and what are you anticipating in the drive-through?
So it's, in terms of tenant? There is a couple of choices, you know, we have a food or a coffee, so we have two that are interested in that location in terms of convenience. And what's nice about it, you know, the tenants are okay with the drive-through being tucked in back and hidden back here, so you know, you always worry, out of sight, out of mind, but they said, you know, this works great because it's relatively clean access and it's buried back here, and you know, one time forgot to explain, it's screened, this stone that you see here is going to go all the way back and create a solid wall, so the drive-through won't be visible.
From the freeway.
From the freeway at all, so the only place it'll be visible is from within the development itself.
So the access to this drive-through would be coming all the way through from Industrial Boulevard?
Right here, around-
Or coming through the back temple entrance?
Exactly.
Okay.
Exactly. And we sort of thought that was the best location because, you know, I didn't want to, you know, put it here and sort of make that the prominent view of the front corner, the front street address of the building. Where tucked between the temple and the building was sort of a nice, quiet area in which it can occur, but not be the main architectural icon of the building, so that's sort of how this plan evolved.
And my final question is, talk to me about your assessment of parking, and what is an adequate amount of parking?
So the parking, so the parking, you know, it played with, it depends on the tenants, you know, the one reason why I worked with the temple was see if we can try to create combined uses because theirs is so underutilized, and ours is, so the idea is, is there a way that we can do some less parking, provide a little more greenery, and utilize the existing inventory of parking in the area? So this is, you know, a bit of a, maybe a new concept with Edina in terms of shared parking, but I thought this was worth bringing forward, working with the commission and Kerry to see if this idea could be accomplished, so we're not creating more and more asphalt, but using some of the asphalt in the area that's underutilized, and so that basically was the approach we took on this.
Do you have tenants?
We actually have had very good luck in terms of the tenants. Two reasons that are attractive was, you know, I'll say it positively, the architecture attracting, so as you knew, presence, the view and prominence from Highway 100, and you know, just the fact that this area is sort of a good employment base, and Edina has a very good daytime traffic, so the answer is yes.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Grable.
I was a bit concerned with moving that close to the street, but I like the idea of all the glass on the, on that corner. It reduces the, the massive of the building there, and it really is a nice, a nice concept.
No, thank you. You know, it's sort of the idea that the building of these major corners in Edina, 7th and France, that you sort of create a, sort of a gateway and an icon that hopefully sets a precedent for development to follow, so this is sort of under that same idea is what's been built into this.
Commissioner Potts.
Thank you, yes, I like the design of this a lot, I think it's a very attractive building. You know, you've heard my concerns about visibility, I think I'll leave that to the traffic engineers to study more closely once this plan develops. I want to compliment you on that parking strategy, you know, I think as a commission generally, we've been willing to underpark, assuming that people running the commercial business know what they need, and we've had an example or two of proof of parking reserved in the form of green space, which is great. I think this is yet another improvement to find a compatible piece of property directly adjacent, and to create that cross-access easement, really, in my mind, solves a lot of issues with this. I had a note here about that drive-through, in the plan we had in our packet did not have the access between lots, and I just didn't see how that was going to work to get in and out from Industrial Boulevard that way. So I think that's great, and I would encourage you, you know, once you get that, or start to hammer out that agreement, you'll have to come in for a parking variance, bring in some, some form of that for us, yeah. But I think that's just a great solution, so it's a tight site, challenging site, but it looks promising with those comments. Thank you.
Commissioner Forrest.
I'm concerned about the parking a little bit in a different way, you've got the drive-through at the far end from the most visible entrance, and so people who want to use the drive-through are going to be going through, all those people backing in and out, or backing out of those parking spaces, and depending on the time of day and what kind of tenants you have, we've got the library all over again, and I'm wondering, I know that on the other project that you mentioned earlier, you did some directional, or I think you did some diagonal parking in there?
Correct.
In order to fit things properly on the site? I'm wondering if that, and people who, again, know more about the traffic patterns and stuff can help me out here, but I'm more comfortable in tight spaces with diagonal parking, even though it may not be, it may not maximize the number of spaces as much as straight in, especially when I'm backing out and it just seems easier to see for me, so especially, you know, depending on the width of the spaces and all those things.
On that idea, and I know, and that's the reason why we thought of getting the egress from both sides, so that this didn't become the sole, because in respect, we're saying the library factor, that there was two ways into the site. The only issue about diagonal parking, it's one way, so the problem is if I come in this way, I have to go out through the temple, and I don't know if I want to impose that on them, if you're kind enough to allow this shared arrangement, but I don't want to force all the traffic, so I get what you're saying, but in this case, I'd rather stick with the idea of providing two ways to provide some of the relief, but keep the parking at 90 degrees.
That's a good point. I don't, you know, unless there's signage, I don't anticipate that people would necessarily think they are allowed to park at the temple, I'm not sure, but maybe employee parking or something like that, too, even.
And that was really what the primary idea is, that if we, the idea is get the employee parking off-site, which would really free up the parking here and give better sightline, so that was really the idea, that the employee pool would park here at the far end of the parking lot, thus keeping this open for customers.
That's the thing, I was visualizing every car going in and going around the drive-through, so they'd be coming out that way, but that's not true, so thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Schroder.
I just have three comments, and actually, I like the location of the drive-through. It puts all of the stacking across the 270 linear feet or so of the building, and my guess is that if there's ever a parking, if there's an issue with stacking, it's this property's own issue and not ours. So pushing the cars all the way through the parking lot, I think, is not a bad strategy. I like the way the mass of the building addresses the really big landscape of Highway 100, and I'll use landscape kind of in quotes. It's a really broad corridor, and to be able to address a more engaging facade along that 270 or so feet of the building, I think is good, and the way it turns the corner as you enter Edina, you don't really enter Edina on Highway 100, you enter it when you turn off of Highway 100, and you're presented with a smaller, more intimate and pedestrian scaled facade, which I think is exactly how we should be thinking about gateway buildings, that they're not just one thing. The one thing that I would like to see, and this is, you know, with all the other things going on, all the other moves you've made, working with your neighbor to the north, I'd actually like to see you work with your neighbor to the east, which is MinDOT, and find a way that that, in this image right here, what we have kind of is a front lawn to Edina, up against, from the curb of the exit ramp up to the building facade. The problem is, we have MinDOT with its fence, and MinDOT with its landscape, and MinDOT with its landscape practices, and what I'd really like to see is a way that you could work with MinDOT, maybe to have a more accommodating fence, and a more accommodating landscape, and for your property owner to actually maintain the property between the curb and the building, so it really is the gateway. I think the problem you face here is you create a gateway signature building, and you've got an unkempt landscape in the front yard, when this really is the front yard. So I think with all of the design things you're doing, I think we have to look at that space that you don't control, and trying to assert some measure of control over it to make the building really work the way you've described it.
No, I appreciate that, and I'm with you on this, because where this idea came from, there was a shopping center built on Blake and Highway 7, I think it's Mount Properties that has the Five Guys, and they took over the Welcome to St. Louis Parks sign and developed all that landscaping. They sort of took delivering this running, showing that fence gone with the idea, says, is there a chance, and this is where I may need the city's help approaching MinDOT, you know, a private developer approached me, and they said, yeah, yeah, the city approached it saying, look, we like the building, we like with the direction, we want to create a gateway, would you be willing to work with the city of Edina and the developer, in which the fencing could be changed, or use a building as a fencing, and reduce it to create exactly the idea on that? And so, yeah, I'm with them, I understand, but this is something, I need the city's help, we sort of have to sort of appeal together to get them to sort of move on this idea, but I absolutely support that, it's a great thought.
Commissioner Hala.
I had a concern with the drive-through, and I'm not totally positive about the spacing, but if it was busy and the line was backed up, I think the line would extend into that smaller section of parking spaces, and I was concerned that maybe the line would block cars parked from backing out.
And that's a fair statement, because, you know, when we get to about car six or seven, that becomes a risk, and that's very true, and that's why we sort of took what I call the least likely parked spaces, and let those be the ones at the biggest risk of the drive-through. And the thought was, you know, do you limit the space, no, because you need the parking, but this edge here, and obviously working with the temple, those would be the employee parking spaces which could take the risk of being blocked in, so that was sort of the idea behind it. So, no, but I respect what you're saying, I agree with what you're saying, but that was sort of the approach on it, to make that work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Fisher.
I think, oh, there are a lot of things about this that I like. One comment that I would make, as you, and I really like the shared parking idea, but to make that really work, especially for, if you think about weekend use for the temple, thinking about, as we talked a lot about the previous sketch plan review tonight, the pedestrian connections, in this case, there's almost a connection between the two properties, that right now the vehicle connection could be there, but, and it's just not showing up at this, in this rendering, but I would think that you want some sort of pedestrian connection, so they're not walking in the middle of the parking lot, or vice versa with, you know, employees from this site.
And that's a good point, and what I'm thinking, you know, because there's a drive-through, but is it, do I cross and come over like this, that could be the possibility of-
That's kind of what I was thinking.
How I view that, because, you know, I developed a sidewalk here, but the idea is I could take it and bring it here so that they have that connection, or the employees have that connection, to make, you know, I made accessibility on this side, pedestrian accessibility, you know, it would make sense to let it maybe occur on this side, so, yeah, that's a-
But the one, just from a design perspective and your early concepts, the other rendering, the view from the highway intersection, what I appreciate about that view, and I think you were alluding to this earlier, is if you think about all of our gateway opportunities in Edina, we tend to use these stone-type elements, and here, the element's here, and it just happens to be incorporated into the building, and that piece I really like.
No, thank you. Tradition of the city hall, and that's where, when they did the 70s, and that just built off of that.
So I have just a couple of comments, I'm pretty much agreeing with everyone, what they say here, it really looks nice, I like the idea that, you know, you're putting the building out front, it's closer to the street, it's access, and to kind of pick up on Commissioner Schroder's piece to that, I was thinking, you know, in that corner, again, it has to do with MinDOT, so maybe it's on your property, but is there a pedestrian area there, a patio, and is there public art out there or something? I realize it's not a, maybe a huge draw, but nevertheless, it's kind of that gateway theme, what is there? You know, and, you know, we're always looking in the city for more places for art, and this, you know, may be one that would be there, and I don't know what that would be exactly, but just something for your consideration-
Oh, thank you.
-as you look at that piece and making that, to complement your building, of course, along with that for a gateway.
You know, I support all of it, because Edina has built a great tradition of art, you know, through the walkway in the center, and try to take that and spread it beyond in other aspects of the community makes sense, you know, like I said before, the one thing I really need help with, MinDOT, is city help. I need sort of the power of the city, craft of the city to help-
I'm sure some people at the city can help you, right Kerry?
So, so, no, appreciate that.
And then, also just a comment, and I really like the cross-access easement, you know, taking advantage of, you know, we have all these areas, if you look at the site plan, you have all this parking that doesn't connect, and how can we better use of it? And I'll just make a plug, I still think there should be a cross-accment to the property to the west, not just for, you know, cross-shopping for people, but just, you know, how do you get to the, how do you get to those places, you know, with the road situation here, you know, if you want to get from the west property to the east property, how do you even do that? Or vice, you know, the other way is a little bit easier, but getting back from the west side, you'd have to pull across Industrial, back in, and it becomes a messy situation, so I strongly encourage again for everyone to talk about that, and I'm guessing the city council will definitely have those concerns, and, you know, may or may not call out a small area plan for this because of these things going on.
No, as I said, we, you know, did suggest it, but in respect for them, they were uncomfortable with our cross-traffic, but can we accommodate it in this plan? Yes.
Yeah, like I said, I'm not talking about parking necessarily, but just for their, your customers getting around on these sites. Anything else? We covered quite a bit here.
No.
Do you have any, anything for us?
No, what we plan to do is ask the council, and, you know, if, like I've said before, if you can help take the charges with MinDOT, we would welcome to really make that car. Kerry, pointing at you.
Yeah.
If you could help on that, that would be fantastic-
Absolutely.
They sometimes really behave in their own silo, and sometimes the city have a lot more for us, so I appreciate your comments and help on this, so thank you very much.
Great, thanks for coming in.
Thank you.
So next up is the tree preservation ordinance. This has been through here a fair amount of times, and hoping we're getting to a good spot. Right now we have public hearing scheduled for next meeting, correct?
Correct, February 26th. So the ordinance before you, a couple of things, I've tried to include all of your comments from the last meeting, thanks to Commissioner Carr for doing a lot of cleanup work on this to make it a much more readable.
Lawyer had to go through it.
And so we've relocated it, we had some discussion at the last meeting to put it in with our new construction management rules, in the building permit provision section of the code, so we've done that now, it's now section 10 of the ordinance, that was at the recommendation of the city attorney. So before you, there's another draft, we're open for editing either tonight, or if you have any other edits prior to our public meeting, let me know, but the idea is to have another discussion on this this evening, and then tee up our public hearing for our next meeting.
Comments, questions? Commissioner Shear?
Well, just thanks to Commissioner Carr, I would say, for, my big concern was the clarification of to whom this applies, and I think the green section in section, the green highlighting in section 1082 does that just perfectly with a minimum number of words.
Brought it to the front.
Yeah, so that's fine, I like that a lot.
Commissioner Grable.
My only concern with this, and maybe you can talk with the city attorney about it, is it talks about, let me see, oh, yeah, for example, in 5D or 5E, if replacement relocation cannot be found in property, blah, 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 subject to the approval by the city- by the city forester. And I want to make sure that the city forester is not just willy-nilly saying yes or no, that there's some kind of standard. It's not up to his discretion whether he likes something or not, but it's got to be tied to some definite standard, that he can't say no just to say no, because he feels, because it's a bad day for him, or something like that. You know what I mean? So he might mention that to the city, city attorney and make sure that. He may be, if, yeah, if it's the wrong species, he can say no. Or the location, he can say no. But just because, all you say is having a bad day, it's subject to the approval of the city forester. Well, there's got to be a rational standard behind that judgment. So, my only concern.
Commissioner Schroder, I knew you couldn't.
Well, there's, there's that one kind of lagging issue, that we still have removable trees that can be removed without replacement, even though they're providing aesthetic and ecologic benefits. And I mentioned last time as a concern, but I didn't know how to actually frame it. And I still don't know how to frame it. But I think it's still, based on what we described in our purpose at the beginning, we ought to be working harder to make certain that the trees that we think are providing aesthetic and ecologic benefits are, if they're not maintained, they're at least replaced with something that, with a tree that we would want. And I don't see that in here. I still don't know how we do that. But I noted that as a concern the last couple of times through. And it's, it's particularly important, because we note some of the qualities of removable trees in the beginning of this, under the statement of purpose. And probably every one of those six items that are enumerated there reflect aesthetic or ecologic benefits of any tree in Edina, not just those that are protected.
So is it, I wouldn't say it's simple as, but if you do remove a tree, do you have to replace it?
It might be that if we have a protected tree, I think we were trying to replace protected trees at a two-to-one ratio. Maybe those ones that are removable are replaced at a one-to-one ratio, or something like that. And it's an attempt to try and get the aesthetic and ecologic benefits back in place at some point in time.
Comments? I would agree with that approach. At least to get something there, yeah. I just had one comment on here. And it's, it's somewhat arbitrary, but just thinking back to the, some of the remodels we've seen, and how they've worked to protect the trees actually right next to the house. And they seem to be doing pretty well. So under 6A, where we talk about what protected trees may be removed in the following areas, you know, and we are, right now, we have a 10-foot radius from the building pattern, new and remodeled. I'd like to propose to, to move that down to seven feet. I don't know if five is too close, but at least closer there, because it seems to be a lot of instances where people are very respectful, they've, they've been able to do it, versus just kind of giving license for the, the broader 10-foot. I don't know if there's any comments on that's enough, or not enough, or, go ahead.
Well, I'm not.
Again, I'm not saying an arborist.
An arborist. So I can't really comment. But I mean, seven feet, I mean, normally you don't want to plant trees that close to your home, for a variety of reasons. The branches are going to knock into your home, you have root problems and other things. So removing a tree that's within a 10-foot radius seems reasonable to me. And I'd be concerned about making that radius any smaller.
Commissioner Forrest.
It's kind of species-specific, too, as to whether or not the tree is going to likely survive or not survive, depending on the root system.
Just a thought. I'm not, Commissioner Shear?
I guess I'm comfortable with the 10-foot, for many of the reasons that Commissioner Carr is addressing. I, you know, as far as droppings in the gutter, and, and roots coming through walls into the basement, and that sort of thing. 10 feet seems like a reasonable number to me, but I am not an arborist, nor a builder.
That's fine.
Mr. Chair, I can't actually think of a condition where I've seen tree roots growing through a basement wall. Maybe others have had that experience. But tree roots will not grow into a place where there's not a suitable growing environment. So if they're coming into a concrete-blocked wall, they're going to turn around and go the other way. So I don't know that that's as much an issue. I'm actually kind of in agreement with you, that if it's seven feet, it's just going to get people to work harder to preserve trees that we really want to have. The, the issue will be perhaps not with the part of the tree that we can't see underground, but the part we can see above ground, particularly as they try and construct an improvement. They will be doing pruning of that tree to move materials around. But I don't disagree that seven feet would be not an impractical distance. I think it's going to encourage people to work harder to save trees. And if they can't, there's still the replacement requirement, which they might choose to do anyway.
Any other comments either way?
I don't, no.
Commissioner Shear.
I actually have seen a root harm an old cinder block basement. But, but, but if the roots, if following your, your theory, that the root structure would go away from the basement, if you have an exceptionally large tree, that isn't developing a fully circular root structure, is it more prone to come down? Is it, is there, are there any guidelines about that?
The hard part with tree roots is we don't actually know where they are until you dig everything up. And by then, the tree's dead. So you can never really tell. But I would tell you, they don't necessarily grow in a, exactly circular fashion around a tree.
Okay.
And they often, most often, for mature trees, grow many times beyond the drip line, which is kind of the parameter we often use. But most likely, they're not growing into areas where they will, where they can't continue to grow. So while there might be occasions where they will push against a surface, and we had somebody talking about a driveway surface with a silver maple, it's common, the tree roots are shallow, they're most likely going to grow into areas where they have large, unimpeded, open to the sky, open to the water flow, open to the air, growing environments, not into basements. So, and the other thing is that every tree, even within the same species, is different in terms of how it's going to react to impacts of construction. So we just can never tell how it's going to react. We can't predict it.
So, go ahead.
I have a question, and that is on our setbacks. I think we have some 10-foot setbacks from, I don't know if that's the side yard, was that what we were just referring to? So let's say you were doing a remodel, and you had, you put your building at the 10-foot setback. And there was a tree that's at seven feet. I don't, it just seems impractical. You're only talking about a 10-foot area here to work when you're doing construction work. It seems like it would be very impractical to try to keep that tree when you've only got 10 feet to work with. So again, I proponent for 10-foot.
So it sounds like we're not really in agreement here. Yeah. Well, I was going to say, you know, maybe, maybe the best thing to do right now is take it through the public hearing and see what else comes out of that, because I'm, some other things may come up. So, Commissioner Forrest.
I'd like to know, I don't think, but maybe it's more difficult or more expensive the closer you get to a, a structure to protect the tree. But I don't think it would be significantly different. But if anybody finds out, you don't think, good. So if there's any other information to the contrary, or, or statements of fact, if people are concerned about that, too, it's good to know.
All right. Sounds like we're done with that one. Thanks, everyone, for your valuable input. I'll see what happens at the public hearing. So next up is correspondence petitions. I know, Carrie, we, I never get the council update online, so I don't know if there's any, or do you have any comments?
I don't.
Okay. Anything on any other pieces going on? Okay. Chair and commission member comments? Commissioner Carr?
On the living streets, Task Force, they're continuing to make progress on that. The last meeting that we attended, they talked about water drainage issues, watershed issues. So again, nothing revolutionary there, but we're making progress.
And just one comment on, so you probably were, but, so there's interviews going on for, for commission board replacements. There is one last Thursday, one this Monday, and there'll be one next Wednesday, I believe, for that. So there's about 32 people applying for 19 positions, something like that. And so we need somebody to place, replace Commissioner Grable. I don't know if that can ever be done. But along the way, and I believe Commissioner Fisher, too, right? So look for that.
It will be difficult, but I'm sure they can do it.
So my understanding is those will be appointed by the end of February or early March, at that point. Anything else? Otherwise, would take a motion.
I do have a, I had forgotten, but I can give you an update at the last council meeting. We had the sketch plan for the duplex, remember the single-family home behind, on 49th Street?
Behind the parking structure, yeah.
So the council, we did the sketch plan review with them. I think the council was unanimous in thinking the use is okay, that a duplex would be an appropriate use there. But they were split on the specific proposal that was before them. And it was a lot of the concerns that the planning commission shared, that it was just a little bit too much for the site. Building was, was too big. So I haven't had a chance to meet yet with the applicant, but I believe he is going to revise the plans and, and take a shot at it with a, a smaller building. There was.
That was my big concern.
Yeah. Yeah, I think that was, the council shared that same concern, that, that too is, you know, most of the, the duplexes in that neighborhood did have just one drive. So to maintain that. Setback issues, that retaining wall that they were showing, went right to the lot line. They weren't including that three-foot setback that's now required. So a lot of the, the same concerns that the planning commission had. So we'll see if they come back with a little bit smaller of a, of a plan.
Commissioner Fisher, I didn't mean to imply that we wouldn't miss you also, or be, you're replaceable. But we already did that once before. Worth I take a, a motion to adjourn? Second. Thanks, everyone.